Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised as proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the council, city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form which are up there and give them to our city clerk, Daisy. You want to raise your hand, Daisy? Show them who you have. So, give it to her and then you'll have three minutes, but I'm asking the public, I'm sure there's a lot of people that want to speak, so if there's some repetitiveness stuff, if you can hold it, maybe not go up, but or just get out the agenda as fast as you can. I'm going to tell you, this request to speak, public comment, is a comment, it's not a dialogue. You can ask questions, the council will write down the questions, we won't give you the answer right there. After everybody's speaking, I will ask the questions to our Edison representative. So, once again, this isn't a dialogue where you're going to get an answer right when you ask the question. You can ask a question and we'll write it down for you. Ladies and gentlemen, let's be civil here. Everybody's, you know, a little upset about the power. I am too. I don't have power. I have to also take care of my in-laws who are 81 and 82 without any power, and they're nowhere near the mountain. So, we've got a lot of stuff to do here. Like I said, we have Mark Clouder, representative from Edison. He's the punching bag, but please be nice to him. He's here and it takes a lot of guts to come here on a to come and talk to you. He's just as concerned as we are. He's concerned about the senior center, he concerned about the zoning, so he's really concerned and he's a really good person and he's down to earth. We've been dealing with this issue since November. As a matter of fact, I talked to him today and I told him I had an issue and he asked what my issue was. I said, "The issue is I can't fly my kite because there's no wind blowing. Why are we still out of power?" So, I know, I know the frustrations, all right? And there's a reason that they have for this situation. So, we also have to remember the people who lost their homes and the fires that happened there. And I know we had a fire, actually, Mark was actually helping his neighbor water down his house because of the fire over there by Harupa again in Riverside. So, please be civil, hold your clapping and pausing and booing down. You know, it takes a lot of guts to get up there and speak, but just give everybody the respect to speak and listen to them. Some people might have a different opinion, but just be respectful tonight, please. So, we're going to go ahead and convene this a regular meeting on Tuesday, January 14, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Tonight's meeting is in memory of my longtime Grand Terrace family and friend, Karen McKiever. We have Lisa Young McKiever here, but Karen probably would have liked this meeting because she was a spitfire. So, beautiful soul she has, she always stopped me in my front yard and wanted me to see how the flowers were painted on her mirrors on her car. So, she was also the wife of our former president for the water company, Bill McKiever, who went to be with the Lord a couple of years ago. So, the family's here tonight, so this meeting's in their honor, Karen's honor and your honor. You know, thank you, Lisa, for coming out tonight and, you know, we'll miss Karen and, you know, she was a beautiful woman and talking, you know, she'll talk your ear off, you know? And she had to, to put up with her son-in-law, Jeff, you know, so. But this is honor of her and we'll probably later on have a certificate for you for that honor, all right? So, invocation will be given by Pastor Mark Matthews at Grandview Baptist Church and the pledge allegiance will be given by our new council member, Matt Brown. So, please stand and rise.
Let's go to God in prayer. Father, first, we want to ask a special touch from your Holy Spirit on the McKiever family and their loss and ask that you would comfort them in a very special way. And now, Lord, I ask that your Holy Spirit would fill this place. There's going to be a lot of discussion this evening. I pray that it will be calm and civil, as Mary has already said. There are people that have lost everything in these fires and we pray for them as well across Southern California. They've lost everything and no home to go to and I pray that you would be with them and the relief organizations that are helping them. And then, the situation here in Grand Terrace is not good and we ask that you would speed up the process somehow through your power, which we believe in, and that you would grant our city electricity soon. We thank you for all that you've done for us and your mercy and your grace, and we now just give you this evening and pray that you will be honored and glorified as we discuss city business. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible for the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Mark. You're going to leave us, you're not going to stay and break up the crowd? I said, "You're leaving us?" Okay, well, just keep us in your prayer. No, I'll just mess with you, sir. But thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you, Matt. So, Madam City Clerk, can we roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Sabino?
Present.
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Mayor Proton Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Hussey?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Ida May, reordering additional or removal items from the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move number four ahead of the presentation, please.
All right, we'll move on item four before the special presentation. So, public comment. This is opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in the California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from the staff when questions arise during a public comment that may or may request the matter to be agendized for a future meeting. So, I know a lot of your questions are going to go through Edison, we'll write them down and then if the representative can write them down too, maybe highlight some of those on his presentation, which I think he is. So, Madam City Clerk?
We have Mary Wilson.
So, special presentations? Okay, so, these are going to be items not related to the Edison agenda. So, these are items not on the agenda. So, if you have, Madam City Clerk, if they're for the special presentation on Edison, we'll hold them off.
Okay.
So, do we have any on not on for the special presentation?
Yeah, Mary Wilson.
Okay. Mary?
Okay, so, I'm here on behalf of the Blue Mountain Senior Villas resident community and, of course, we've been shut off, but mainly the reason that we all want to be here is because we want to push the management company owners into either installing an emergency backup generator or solar with backup batteries. And they do not answer our phone calls, they do not respond to emails, so we need somebody to be an advocate for us.
That's going to be, okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else that's not for anything on Edison?
Shad Bull?
Shad, this isn't an electric thing, is it? Okay.
All right. Hello, Mayor, City Council, city manager and staff. I'd like to start this on a positive note. We know that this is going to be a rough night. First of all, I would like to say a huge shout-out to Christie McGuire at Get Loaded, Chris Watkins at Loudburger, and Jason Greeley at Lowbrow Inc. These owners have shown how to lead by example, opening their business to public outside of their normal hours to provide access to warming areas, charging stations, and more. They are true examples of good neighbors. Second, our city government. You have stepped up to help your citizens. From warming stations to traffic safety to food distribution, you have been there. Our city employees have gone far above their schedules and their paychecks to help others. Thank you, Tabitha. Third, our small CERT team, who have been volunteering around the clock, joining the city staff to man the city warming stations, distribution of food distribution, and checking on the well-being of residents at the Senior Villa. Thank you, Judith, and the CERT team. We need more volunteers like you. We really do. Fourth, our residents. Helping each other out, from supplying a cord over the fence to keep your neighbor's refrigerator and some lights on, to opening their homes to others in this time of need. Thank you. Thank you, Grand Terrace residents. I am proud to live here. On the other hand, there is the Senior Villas. I have witnessed firsthand that those residents are going through. No electricity for seven days, no hot water, no lights, no heat, and sadly, little to no visitors. Management has all but abandoned them. With little to no cell service within the building, no constant way to charge their phones, they are essentially cut off from the world. Those on the second floor with disabilities are essentially stuck. One elevator broke down and the other elevator does not work because of no power. The fire alarm system is not working for days now because of no power and no effort by the management to correct this issue. If there was a fire, they would not know it until it was too late. I would not be surprised if there was serious lawsuits to follow in the future. I have photos to backify back all my statements. Let's continue to build a better, more disaster-prepared community.
Daisy, is there nobody here speaking about energy?
He said positive comment.
Half.
Yeah. Reverend Ida Reynolds?
Senior Center.
This is Senior Center on energy as well.
Madam, hold on, we're going to call you back in a minute.
Bobby Forbes?
Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for coming. I'm so glad that there's such a great turnout for all the reasons that we're here. And I'm not going to touch on the SCE thing until it's on the agenda, but please, secure your fences, we're still going to have wind. I have had to help so many dogs in this community in the last week. It's overwhelming. Animal control code enforcement is busy at City Hall. They have other things to do besides catch your dog and so do I. I'm walking with canes now, I can't go out and get your dogs and hold them till you get home from work. So, please, help your neighbors, get your dogs microchipped and licensed here in Grand Terrace or somewhere else, just get it done. Do you realize if you have a dog and it has a microchip and it's found on the street and someone scans it, it might not go to the shelter where it could die or get adopted or have something like that happen. It becomes personal property. Don't be cheap. Spend the 20 bucks and get your dog microchipped and maybe your cat. Thank you.
No more public comment.
Excuse me, I have one that I put the card in.
Regarding SCE?
No.
What's this about?
It's about on Tuesday night when the whole city was out about streetlights.
We're going to talk about that during Edison thing, but please fill out a form, ma'am, so we can talk.
I did.
So, we're going to talk about Edison, power generators, streetlights, after Edison speaks. Now, as far as the far as the fire alarms in the senior place that's taken care of, there's an established fire watch. We made sure that was done last night, so that's taken care of, so they're safe. So, if there is a fire, there'll be doors banging and do it the old-fashioned way. And the fire marshal's been out there tonight to today to inspect and he approved that contingency plan. So, do we have anything else, Daisy?
No, sir.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the comments and we're going to bring it to item four. Is proclamation of existing of local emergency, Conrad?
Great. Let me come up there. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, as you're aware, on January 9th at 4:30 in the afternoon, I declared a local emergency for the city of Glan Terrace. Because of the widespread power outages, at that time, power was out throughout the majority of the city, basically everything to the east of Michigan Street, through our main business corridor and all of the schools except for Glan Terrace High School. And we were still facing continued winds. The purpose of the outage was so that we could remain flexible and have the opportunity to react to the situation as we needed it. It also allowed us to continue to provide services to the community and allowed for possible cost recoveries should the areas, disaster areas tied to Los Angeles and Ventura Counties be expanded to us. As far as cost recoveries, the city at this point has expended about $100,000 on services and community support. I'm requesting that you continue the state of emergency and that it continue until rescinded by the city council. Typically, these things will need to run 30, 60, maybe even 90 days. I know the initial emergency is over, but there's recovery, restoration, and unfortunately for all the rest of us, the accounting and getting our bills together and submitting those costs. So, I'm asking that you ratify the state of emergency and continue through at least when we agendize this to rescind the emergency. As part of the activation, we did, when we came in Wednesday, the power was out and, of course, in my wisdom, we said, "What a great time to have an emergency drill. We'll treat it like a drill, it'll power beyond in a couple hours, no big deal." Well, I was wrong. And so, we did set up our emergency organization with our staff, who has been remarkable throughout managing this situation. The current conditions right now, power remains out along Glan Terrace Road on that corridor, Honey Hills and the Preston Corridor and portions of Observation Street and a couple of other pockets in the community. The city has a war has set up warming centers at the senior center, not senior apartments, the senior center, that is open 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. We are providing one meal, one warm meal a day there for anybody that wants to come in and to get a warm meal. There's battery charging, generators, lights, heat, and Wi-Fi at that location. We have City Hall open 24 hours a day. We'll continue to remain open 24 hours a day until power is fully restored and we'll probably keep it up for maybe even a half-day after that, just to make sure that we don't rent in anything else. The same thing, we have power, food, snacks, water, Wi-Fi, heat. We've got a couple of air mattresses in back if you're daring enough to hope they don't deflate under you while you're on them. So, and both centers also have a microwave. So, Senior Center has lunch served, actually, and we've, as of today, we've served about 5,500 separate visits at the two centers. Lunch is served at Senior Center daily, we've done about 800 meals in the last seven days. We will continue to serve lunch. Tomorrow is Thai food. And the city is doing wellness checks, not just at the senior apartments, but we've had requests from several of the residents and family in town. So, we have code enforcement going to those homes, checking on the residents, as well as our staff in the senior apartments, doing daily wellness checks. If you have a family member or somebody you're concerned about, please get ahold of Daisy. You can fill out the talking slip on the back of it, get her the name and address of the person you would like us to check on and a contact number for you that we can get ahold of you if something goes wrong. We will only contact you if something goes wrong, so no news is good news in that respect. But if you request it, we will have city staff check on anybody who needs it at least once a day. Right now, the traffic signal at Honey Hills and Barton Road is non-operational. This is a four-way stop. We have stop signs that are light with lights on them. Please follow the traffic rules, treat this as a four-way stop. We've had traffic, other traffic signals out during portions of the outage, the battery packs on those only last so long, then they go to flash and then they go out. So, be aware of that. If they are out, we are putting stop signs at those signals. If they are out, please treat that as a four-way intersection, stop and behave accordingly. We have refrigeration cities, facilities here at City Hall for any residents that have medication that needs to be refrigerated. We can store that for you, then you can get access to it when you need it. We'll put it back in secured storage. We've also rented a freezer truck. It's parked out in the city yard for businesses only, but we, at one point, when all the power was out down Barton Road, that truck was full to the gills. I'm guessing we saved somewhere between $250,000 and $350,000 of inventory for our businesses in town by them being able to move their frozen goods and not lose that inventory. So, we will continue to have the truck until power is restored, should there be any other occurrence on that. With that, when, if the power goes out on the Barton Road corridor, we will provide, we will bring in food trucks to City Hall so people can purchase a warm meal. We will not bring food trucks if the restaurants are open. We don't want to compete against the restaurants, but we want to make sure that residents can get themselves a warm meal and purchase, purchase, we're not giving it away, purchase a warm meal somewhere in town. So, we'll get food trucks if power goes out on Barton Road where the restaurants are. Staff has committed about 1,000 man-hours to this incident. We've been here 24 hours. Our CERT team has done over 60 hours. These are volunteers, residents, and people of the community, and they are remarkable individuals, many of them shifting their whole lives over to the night work, working nights. Public Works will continue to monitor our traffic signals. They're still picking up debris in the street, windfall, trees, whatever else. We've still got some fences in damage that we're dealing with, so Public Works is fully engaged in that. We did have street sweeping on the major streets, Van Buren, Pico, De Berry, Michigan, Mount Vernon, Barton Road, a couple of other main streets, just to get most of the debris and stuff up. If we got it up, then it's not going to be blowing in the wind later. Regular street sweeping will continue on Thursday on the regular schedule. We wanted to get that out of the road before it got on. We did hold building inspection because of the high winds for two days, but we're back, we've caught up in building inspection, those of you that are looking for it. We are doing that on a regular basis. We'd like to thank the Water District. You know, we get to stand in front of you in Bragg and those guys get to go out there and work and deliver water. So, they've done a remarkable job. They've managed their water tanks and kept the tanks full manually, so sometimes you'll see water overflowing, that's because the guy has to make sure the tank's full and he has to go run down to turn off the pump. So, we do have some water overflowing as part of that and it's just normal as part of that operation. What is happening? City Hall will continue to be staffed 24 hours as charging warming centers, we'll have snacks, water, all the Wi-Fi. I understand tonight, the overnight crew is doing the full version of Lord of the Rings, so anybody that has a burning passion can come down and watch Lord of the Rings with them. We'll continue to provide one warm meal a day to the seniors and we will continue to do welfare checks as requested to anybody that wants that. What is not happening, and I want to emphasize really strongly, do not get your news from social media, okay? Please, don't. We are posting twice a day informational updates on the city website and on the city Facebook page. Please get your information from there. Please get your information from us. We are not giving away free generators to residents. Somewhere that got out there, okay? There have been no deaths or injuries associated with the incident at the senior center or anywhere else. There have been no cases of looting or robbery associated with the incident. We've had a couple of responses to the senior apartments, one last night where two seniors got into a little bit of a kerfuffle and we had to break it apart. There is, there are no homeless invading the facility, there are no robbers in there, there are no people taking over the facility. Our sheriff's department has done a remarkable job on doing extra patrols in that area and extra patrols in the area that are without power. I don't know if you see them or not, but they have, they have really stepped up and that's why we're not having these instances of looting and robbery that some of the other communities have. Our sheriffs are there, they're on top of it, they're doing a remarkable job. So, once again, I reiterate, please do not get your information from social media. We're trying to give you as much information, as cleanly, openly, and fairly as we can, at least twice a day. If there's other things happening, we will, we will update more rapidly, but you should get an update sometime about 9:00 o'clock and sometime about 4:30 every day. And with that, I think that's it, yes. With that, I request that you do extend the emergency proclamation until it's brought back to you to be rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad. Does the council have any questions? Mayor Proton?
No questions, you're on.
Statements? Councilmember Sabino?
Conrad, I would like to thank you, one, when power went down November 6th, you know, immediately we were on the phone because the senior villas was a concern to us. The medical situation, being for them being able to maintain refrigeration of their medications and just saying, you know, "We need Ziploc bags and Sharpies" was how it started. And then, you moving forward with being able to provide a generator at the station and making sure that we had fire and other abilities to be able to move people off the second floor who weren't mobile, who had somewhere to transport. When this happened again, immediately I messaged you, "Hey, are you aware, we're, you know, city's down again." And so, thank you to you and the staff for activating right away again and putting the residents, our most vulnerable residents, as a priority. I know that our hands are tied because it is a private facility and we're doing everything that we can. Thank you to the Assemblymember, Letitia Castillo's office, for coming in also to stand with the city and do wellness checks and check on everyone to see what they need. To my colleagues as well, who have stopped in at the facilities as well to see, to check on people. I know I've gone out and given my personal phone number. I know that social media isn't the place to get information, but I have posted my personal phone number in circumstances where I saw that there was a need. Residents have reached out to me to say, "Hey, someone's in their car, they've been there for a long time," which, you know, we're, again, those are the things that we need to know so we can do these wellness checks and make sure that our residents are taken care of. I'd like to also thank Senator Ochoa Boggs' office, not only just for helping to see what type of resources we can get in here, but working not only with us and their contacts to see what we could do to designate the senior facility as a, as a medical, a high medical need. So, again, thank you for this presentation and, again, for everyone in this room for coming together because, again, in Grand Terrace communities, everything, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Allen, you want to comment?
When I was the CERT training director and the director of the CERT team here in the city for several years, those of you who went through our training with me will remember that our motto was "A crisis is a terrible thing to waste." And the city manager has stepped up today and told us how he, you and your staff did not waste this crisis one bit and we learned from it. And as residents, I hope we take this message to ourselves personally. I personally learned a big lesson in this four days without electricity whenever I contemplated what if there wasn't sewer or water or gas to go along with that, you know, like the big one came along. So, I think that this has been a true learning experience for all of us, for me and the city and everything. You've done amazing job in stepping up to that, thank you for that. That's what I wanted to say. And I wanted to mention that at the senior center, you know, I went over there and helped serve the lunch over there. Is it always at 1:00 PM?
No, we were running late.
We were running late?
We were running late, we got our order in late.
Sometimes, okay, so it's 12:00 mostly?
So, we shoot for 12:00.
Okay.
And normally with the kitchen operational, we can hit 12:00, but having to go pick up these big orders from, and we're trying to hit local restaurants to keep the money in town, sometimes it takes a while to get the food out. So, we shoot for 12:00, 12:30. The other day was 1:00.
Yeah.
I think that was Friday.
But that's all right, it was really good food and I encourage all y'all to take advantage of it while it's available. Thank you.
Conrad, on this declaration of emergency, I know this is just for us so we could pass funds easier, so you could, you know, get resources for the residents, right? There's hardly any, you know, we're taking away the red tape. One of the things that was requested is, you know, because we're not in a state of emergency in San Bernardino Riverside County, I know we reached out to the offices there because... in San Bernardino Riverside County, I know we reached out to the offices there because I know we're not burning, but we do have people who are suffering from, you know, medical issues, you know, without having power, people are suffering from, you know, even paying extra money for fuel, and they lost their food and stuff. So hopefully we'll hear something on that. So this emergency exemption is just mainly for the city. It's not, we, the residents can't claim anything on this, right?
This declares, this is an emergency declaration that the city has. Now, should there be federal funding, state funding become available, then the residents that incur damage, and there may be limitations on that. So you may not be able to claim the fuel you put in a generator, but you would be able to claim if your roof, the roof blew off your house. And then there are, there are funds that are available and claims for that as part of a disaster. So it's not just for city funds. This would open it up for the whole community. But it is contingent on our, our governor expanding that area to our community.
So do you know that the county's offering anything?
The county is not under a declaration of emergency yet. They have the EOC open and they are operating. I would imagine at some point they will. But they are not offering any services or money, no.
Okay, council, Seville, you have something you want to, about the AG?
I just wanted to piggyback in essence of what you just said. Despite there not being a state of emergency throughout the county at three and a half square miles in Grand Terrace, and at some point we had one hundred percent of the city down, I don't think that any of these surrounding cities have experienced an outage where the entire city has been shut down, and I'm sure Edison could connect me, correct me if I'm wrong, but for us, it has been a state of emergency. Right now, we have, I believe, one thousand four hundred customers or parcels without service with only having three thousand seven hundred parcels in the entire city. A third of our city is still down, and so I, I don't want to minimize that we, that we don't have a state of emergency when, again, we've been fully throttled from being able to access phone, wifi, and electricity, some of our residents not being able to take showers for over a week because they don't have access to hot water anymore. Additionally, I just wanted to clarify that. I, I know that, again, you said with social media and the buzz, these funds are for Grand Terrace residents, correct, not for outlying regions such as High Grove?
This, this is for our community, yes.
Thank you.
But if somebody from High Grove comes in a warming center, we're not going to turn them away, right?
We're not, we're not checking IDs. You know, just like, just like everybody in this, this community, you know, you have reached out, you have taken care of your neighbors. I hear people loaning refrigerators, running extension cords, or loaning generators, running extension cords across fences to run somebody's freezer. We are going to be the same kind of neighbor that you are to each other, so. While, while it is the city of Grand Terrace, we're good neighbors too.
And I believe we had a business here that gave ice from down the hill to pizza place too, and Gary was here, I don't know if he still is. Okay, so any further questions? City Attorney, do we open this up for public comment, or we just going to keep it on?
Yes, sir, we do.
If we can, and stop me if I'm wrong, can, can I request from the, the audience that we roll all this together as one, and then we can deal with it as one, just for efficiency? We can't, we can't say you can't, but I'm, I'm requesting that, please hold your comment, and we'll do it all as one, because Edison is going to, to fill out the information I've got, then you have a full picture to comment on.
Yeah, that's fine, but obviously the public has a right to speak if they so choose.
They, they have a right, if you, if you have a burning passion.
Okay. So Daisy, do we have any public comment on this item only?
No.
Okay. So we'll close public comment, thank you, everybody. So I'm looking for a motion and a second for item four?
Motion to approve item four.
Second.
Motion from Mayor Proten, second from Councilman Brown. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad.
And one last comment, I really would like to thank the staff for everything they've done, and our law enforcement, fire individuals, and our council. And the hardest, one of the hardest things of managing a disaster is managing your electeds and keeping them out of, keeping them from making it a worse disaster, and our council has been remarkably supportive and helpful throughout. So thank you for what you have done as well.
Special presentation, Mark Cloud, or do you want to do? City Attorney, you want to do the public comment on Mark Cloud first, or you want to wait till after?
After he's done.
Okay. After his presentation. Okay, Mark, so Mark Cloud, Government Affairs Manager from Southern California. Edison will be providing an update on the recent power outage. One down, Mark, we'll have the sheriffs protect you.
This is the largest crowd I've ever drawn, I think, in this role. I'm going to start right now, and this is for everyone out there in the room, in the hallway. I am so sorry for what you're going through, for what our company has done to the city. I'm so sorry. This outage has been completely, frankly, unacceptable. It's taken too long, it's too frequent, and you're not getting the information that you're looking for. I'm going to answer as many questions for you as I can tonight. I've got, I think, a lot of the, the answers for you. You might not like the answers, and some of them won't satisfy you, but I've got answers for you. And I think questions from you folks and on the dais will help probably lead the discussion here, and I'll do everything I can to answer your question. If I don't have an answer for you tonight, I'll get it for you. A lot of you have my card, I've run out, I think. I brought a big stack. I didn't expect this many people here, but here we all are. I am going to give you, here from the dais, my email address, and if you would all care to send me an email address after this, I will do everything I can to get you the information you're looking for and to respond as quickly as I can. The email address is mark with a K dot cloud, like cloud in the sky, at s c e dot com. It's that simple. All right, I was going to go into some detail here with these slides tonight, but we're going to, we're going to adjust a little bit, I think. I will go into some of the logic behind the outages and the wildfire mitigation strategies and plans that we have in place and what you're seeing out there. I will get into the extreme weather event that we're experiencing across the Southland, but I really do want to open it up to comments and questions from the council, from the mayor, and I think it'll bring a lot of light to what's going on. It'll probably answer a lot of your questions as well. But again, I am so sorry that you guys have experienced such a long outage. I'm in the government affairs role for the city. I've been working for Edison for about ten years, and this whole time I've been the rep for Grand Terrace and other cities in the inland empire, and I'm happy to serve this city. My twin brother lived here for a while and have really fond memories, swimming in his backyard. And Conrad, I have to give it to you, first of all, this is a great city, but Conrad, you are doing a stellar job managing this, this whole situation. I've never seen a city manager step up like that. And so everything you're doing for the community here, for the business community, keeping refrigerated trucks going for food, all of that, it's incredible, and so I wanted to thank you. All right. I'm probably going to jump around a lot from this slide deck that you're about to see. This is part of the public record, so you guys can all see it if you want. Your clerk has it, I can email it to you. This has all the detail you would ever want to know about why we do what we do as it relates to wildfire mitigation. And so I'm going to skip around a lot though, because I've memorized most of it, and I don't want to bore you. I want to get straight to the meat of the matter. So let's go on, let's go to the next slide real quick. This is a, a quick overview of what our company is and who we are. Obviously, we serve the vast majority of Southern California. The only areas we don't serve are municipal utilities. Those are utilities like Redlands, I'm sorry, Riverside, Colton, Anaheim, and L A D W P, that's the large one in L A County. We serve virtually everything else. We serve five million meters across the Southland, roughly fifteen million people in total, and we're responsible for providing power for all those folks. We are heavily regulated by a couple of different entities. One, the California Public Utilities Commission, the CPUC. This is a five-member body that lives in or meets in San Francisco, and this is the body that is responsible for all of the utility industry's largest decisions and policies. Forgive me. So it's a five-member board, and we basically take all of our cues from the CPUC. The CPUC commissioners, again, there's about five of them, they tend to come from the utility sector. Oftentimes, they're lawyers. They're all appointed by the governor's office. So year after year, whoever is in that seat has been appointed by the governor's office. And again, they give us all of our protocols practically. All of our big decisions come from them, including regulations around things like how much we can charge per kilowatt hour, what our rate of return can be, in other words, our profit, what our profit can be on top of the capital improvement projects that we build to strengthen the grid. So they make all those decisions. There's the California Energy Commission, they make some decisions too. We've formed something with them decades ago with the C E C. All the utilities in California have the state-owned ones or the state, the investor-owned ones. We operate under something called the Regulatory Compact. The Regulatory Compact is what essentially has established the monopoly system of utilities in California. The, the deal is basically this, you can have monopoly, you three utility companies, Edison, PG&E, SDG&E, but you will be heavily regulated by this body, the CPUC, and the California Legislature. So I wanted to quickly go through that because I need you to understand how we are regulated and some of the constraints that we are under as a utility company. All right, let's go on to the next slide. This is a requirement now of all investor-owned utilities in California. Not, this is not true of the municipal utilities, they're under their own guidance. Typically, they are run by a board of directors and their city council. They do not, they're not under the same rules that we are. We are now required, as of, really, it's the Paradise Fire that kind of kicked off the intensity and interest around securing the grid as it relates to wildfire. We've always done wildfire mitigation work, but we are dealing with a new thing, which is incredibly dry conditions, which we're seeing even at the coast, and those dry conditions really do us no favors. Obviously, the high winds play a big role, and we'll get into that as well. But we're all required to submit an annual wildfire mitigation plan. It's on our website, it's on the CPUC website, and it's a big document. It basically lays out everything that we do to prevent fire in California from our system. It's very detailed, it goes through everything. I'm going to go through some of the things that are in that report tonight, and it'll help you understand kind of the, the largest buckets of resources that we place to fight fires on our system. But you should know that every year we submit and, and work on our wildfire mitigation plan. It's very important to us, obviously, and it's come a long way. We are really ramping up our activities for wildfire mitigation. We have over the last few years in earnest, again, going back to the Paradise Fire and some of the fires we've had recently. It's interesting to note that the number of fires that we've experienced in California, the, the number hasn't actually gone up that much. It's maintained, it's, it's been relatively flat. What has changed is the intensity of the fires, the scale of the fires have gone up. That has to do with a couple of different things. One of them is, we are, as a state and a, and a region, we are building more and more housing and buildings and businesses in the foothills. We're expanding our footprint, and so we're placing housing and businesses in increasingly risky areas. So the foothill areas, the mountain areas, these are the highest-risk areas for wildfire. I think you all probably know that. These are the high-fire-risk areas. There are medium-fire-risk areas, and, and then there's low-fire risk. Basically, the further you get away from the foothills, the mountains, the lower your risk, in general terms. But Grand Terrace does have some fire, high-fire-risk areas here, and that has everything to do with the topography, the ground. Not, not entirely with where your house is located on our grid, but everything, it has almost everything to do with the, the mountains, the mountain region, the brush that grows on the mountains around us, and of course, the dry conditions and the weather plays a role. But the one very important thing, that the, the folks who make the declarations around high-fire-risk areas, the folks who decide where those areas are, most of those areas are in the foothills and mountains or areas surrounded by lots of brush and, let's say, open space that has lots of brush. That's arguably the entire inland empire, but obviously, it's more intense at the, at the foothills. All right, let's move on. This, this is, I'm going to skip a lot of detail, but I'm going to basically tell you all in broad terms what we're doing to harden the grid. A lot of people are asking, "What is Edison and the other investor-owned utilities?" And by the way, we're all separate. There's PG&E, SDG&E, and then there's us. We operate independently, we're all independent companies, but we are all regulated by the same entity, the CPUC and the California Legislature, all right? So, hardening the electric grid, what does that mean? It basically means fireproofing the grid. How do we do that? We are replacing things like wooden poles with synthetic poles. We are wrapping conductor, which is the lines, that's what we call the lines, with a synthetic material, and together, we call it covered conductor. It's essentially undergrounding the lines in the sky so that we don't have to underground them, and it's the fastest, most inexpensive way for us to completely eliminate, well, almost completely eliminate, the risk that our lines will spark and create fires if there's vegetation down below them. And so grid hardening is obviously very, very important. It takes a long time to do this work. We've been doing it for the past about eight years, in earnest, every single year, and it's, it's a very costly process, which is one of the reasons why, I'm sure you're all wondering, "Why is my Edison bill so high?" This is one of the reasons. The investments we're making in the grid to harden it is, as you can imagine, at the scale of our company, which serves all of Southern California, it's very, very, it's a very large task. We're doing it, but there's a long way to go. So hardening the grid also looks like all kinds of other, you know, crossarms that go on the poles that are made of synthetic materials that either don't burn or they burn much more slowly. These are fire-resistant, fireproofing the grid, that's what grid hardening is. Enhancing operational practices. This includes everything that we do from an operational perspective, including, and this is kind of low-hanging fruit, but this is a very, very important topic, and it's one that's, we're all hearing about in the news in L A County, vegetation management. We've always maintained our vegetation, we've had to, because we have our lines virtually everywhere, and they're in and around brushed and trees all the time. So there are regulations around how close our lines can be to, to shrubs and what kind of shrubs we can cut down and, and when and why, right? But the important thing to note is, vegetation management is a critical component of fireproofing the state. We play a role, but so does virtually everyone else. You all play a role in vegetation management at your homes. The commercial sector plays a role in doing vegetation management in their sphere. But for us, what it looks like is removing, to the very extent that we, the furthest extent that we can, the vegetation that grows under and around our infrastructure. It's a very big task, also very costly. We've dramatically ramped up that work over the last few years, and it's actually paying off. We're actually seeing a reduction in, in the fire risk in the highest-fire-risk areas of our territory by something like eighty percent. And because, while there's no perfect solution to keeping the electrons in our system, which run hot, obviously, we can't perfectly or one hundred percent limit the, or eliminate the risk that our grid will create a fire, but we can dramatically reduce the risk, and that's what we're doing now. So one of those things of vegetation management, the other thing is, there's a graphic there, you can see a drone flying over the lines. We're doing, we're using drones now. We finally got FAA approval to fly drones over our system, and what that does is it reduces the amount of time it takes for us to inspect a line. This is wonderful technology, it's been rarely, really useful. I wish we could use them for this event and with P S P S outages, but we cannot, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, of course, the wind. The wind is too strong for us to operate our drones. And there's another reason for it that's more operational. The other thing that we're doing now, a lot more of, is, there's a graphic there of the grid, and again, all this detail is in the report that I submitted to the council. We are doing everything we can to bring all the new technology, the latest technology that we possibly can that's available and ready at grid scale, meaning we can apply it across the entire scale of, of our grid, at a, at a price that's reasonable. We're doing that. And so what that looks like is new, all kinds of new wireless digital technology, of course, that's where everything's going. More and more of our operations, more and more of our grid controls are being automated, and they're in the cloud, which is also why we're investing really heavily these days in cybersecurity. As you can probably imagine, the utility companies in places like California are a prime target of bad actors overseas typically, who every single day, all day, attempt to hack into our system to bring the system down and create chaos for all sorts of nefarious reasons. We don't have to look very far, right? Grand Terrace, you've been going through this for a week. And so what we're trying to do with cybersecurity, obviously, is prevent this type of thing from happening at scale, that would be a terrible outcome. And so cybersecurity, another big bucket. And so cybersecurity, another big bucket of ours for improving the grid and making it more resilient in general. But lots of automation is coming, it's already here. We're doing things now like automated switching, where we can take power flows and reroute them in a way that will leave lights on for the largest number of people possible. We can't always do it, it doesn't always work in every situation, but we are getting better and better at sectionalizing, or getting far more surgical with our outages, and it's working. This actually leads to a lot of the questions that I think you all have, which is, why is my power out, but my neighbor across the street has power? There's a couple of reasons for that. One is, it all depends on the circuitry. Where is your house located on the circuitry, and is your neighbor across the street, do they have another, are they on another circuit? If they have lights on and you don't, they either are on a completely different circuit that isn't being impacted, or the circuit that you're on is being impacted by the weather, and we cannot yet bring your circuit back up for reasons that I'll explain here in just a second. But I want to let you know that the work we're doing to fireproof the grid is immense, is very costly, and it takes a long time, but we've done a lot of it already, and we're going to do more. Again, we're dealing with the initial investment of this work, which is why the costs have gone up on your bill. But hopefully, what that means is, over time, with this work, we won't have to invest in this level that we're doing now into the future. And hopefully, what this work ultimately will do is dramatically reduce the risk that our system creates for fire, but also, it would be wonderful, and this is, I think, the chief goal of our company with this work is, wouldn't it be wonderful if we didn't have to use PSPS outages anymore? The public safety power shut-off outages, which is why you're all here. We're going to talk about that, too. Bolstering situational awareness capabilities. So that's a graphic of a weather station. We've deployed nearly 2,000 weather stations across our system. We've never done this before. Edison is now in the business of weather detection and threat detection as it relates to weather, dry conditions, et cetera. We're doing things now that we've never done before as a company, because the risk has gotten so out of hand, frankly, so quickly. Again, we are dealing with environmental issues here that are making conditions on the ground very, very dangerous. We're looking at, all we have to do is look at LA County. LA County is taking the brunt of it across the Southland. I'm really happy that there's no fires taking place yet, really, although there was one behind my house just today. I'm glad that there are no major fires taking place in our county, Riverside County, San Diego, and Orange Counties. Unfortunately, LA County is bearing the brunt of all of it. But what's happening there could easily happen here. We have the same topography, it's all the same. We have the same type of utility infrastructure in place, we have the same type of, the populations are large out here, and of course, we're all, just like they're doing in LA, we're building up and into the foothills. And so this is something that the state's going to have to address, in my opinion, into the future, is how much do we let folks build into the foothills? We, as a company, have to serve wherever folks build. So if you're putting a new apartment complex in a foothill area, we have to serve it, even if we think that's probably not the best place to build, we still have to. But what those weather stations do is they give us really, really good information. In fact, I'm not sure if this is still true, but up until recently, and it might still be true, we were collecting more data, more weather data, on the ground in Southern California than the National Weather Service. And that's because, in large part, because of these systems. What this device will do, and it's, again, they're built on, or they're attached to our system all throughout the Southland, what that will do is, it tells our folks at our emergency operations center in Irwindale, which I think I've invited, some of you might have actually been there, we do tours there all the time, that is our nerve center for everything that you're experiencing right now. The PSPS outages, the weather data that's being collected from, wirelessly from throughout our service territory, and all that data is being crunched by a supercomputer that we now have, and we have meteorologists on staff. We are really doing a lot. I never would have imagined that a utility company would have meteorologists on staff, but we do now. In fact, we also have people on staff now who have the unique experience of being both, at one point, a firefighter and a lineman, the person who climbs the poles. Very unique skill set combination, we have a few of those folks on our staff. These are the folks who help us make the final calls around who gets de-energized where and why. We're going to get into that a little bit later, but that is, these are the three main buckets of where our improvements are going to make sure that our system doesn't spark a fire. Now, again, I wish I could say that all this work will lead to a 100% reduction in fire from our system, but we can't promise that. What I can say is, it will reduce, especially over time, and this is going to take a few decades, but over time, this work will reduce the need for not only PSPS outages, it will reduce the fire risk in California. And so at some point, hopefully, the utilities won't be playing a role. It's important to note that, as it relates to fires, around 10% are created or caused by the utility systems in California. The rest are by, you know, anything else. You can, you probably all know what that might be, arson, negligence around fire, 10% or so comes from the utility sector. And obviously, our whole goal here with all of this activity is to bring that number as low as we can possibly get it. Let's go on to the next slide. Let's move on. Let's move on again, please. I'm skipping a lot of this. This is a slide, if you're curious and you want to see what we're doing in more detail, this is a slide that will show you all the technology that we're placing on top of our power poles these days. It looks like a lot of automated technology, which is good. It looks like, again, wireless reclosers, a lot of technical stuff that will allow us to not only detect faults instantly, but also de-energize lines instantly as well in an automated way, so that our lines, when they're live, don't spark a new fire in the Southland, which can happen when there's high winds. Obviously, the winds that we're experiencing with this event, again, I know we all experienced Santa Ana winds, but this wind event was different. It was more intense, and clearly, it's lasted a very long time. This is absurd, frankly. I've grown up around these winds, and I've never seen this level of wind before. So, wind obviously can affect our system, but so can a number of other things. If a wind, for example, is blowing vegetation into the lines, that can bring down a line. It can not only knock your power out, but it can also spark and send sparks down to the ground, and if there's not good enough vegetation management, that can start a fire. But again, we are, we are working really hard to just strengthen the grid as much as we can. Most of the work is happening in high-fire-risk areas, medium-fire-risk areas. You probably won't see a whole lot of it in the lower-fire-risk areas yet. This is still relatively early days, even though we've been at it for about seven years or so, eight years, we still have a long way to go. So most of this work, right now, is happening in high-fire-risk areas. Again, that covered conductor material that I mentioned earlier, and there's a picture of it in the slide deck, very, very important, again, low-cost way of undergrounding in the sky, as it were, so that if a palm frond were to fly into the line, it won't spark. And so it's wonderful technology, and we're using it now more and more. We will talk about undergrounding, I know you probably all wonder why we don't underground more, I'll get into that as well. Let's move on to, let's move on, please. Okay. This is what fireproofing the grid looks like. So I already talked about covered conductor, there's a picture of covered conductor right there, it comes in various sizes, but you can see the metal wiring in the middle, that's the cable, that sends the electrons along. The gray and black material around it, that's the covered part, it's the sheath, and together it makes covered conductor. It's actually very, very effective. Fire-resistant poles, again, replacing wooden poles with fire-resistant poles made of synthetic materials. These are going up everywhere, again, especially in high-fire-risk areas. If you go up to the mountains now, or walk in the foothills, you will start seeing more and more of these all the time, they're everywhere now. Targeted undergrounding. Everyone wants to know, why doesn't Edison underground the system? And for that matter, why doesn't the, all of the utilities across California underground? There's a few reasons for that. It's not a magic bullet, first of all. Undergrounding will not solve all problems, in fact, it creates new problems operationally, it takes us longer to re-energize lines that have been de-energized if they're underground. They do, obviously, they provide aesthetic benefits as well, but they do, this does help reduce the fire risk, for obvious reasons. If the circuitry is below ground, obviously, it can't get tangled up in trees, or palm fronds, or whatever. But we're doing targeted undergrounding, meaning we're only doing this work very prescriptively, we're only doing it in high-fire-risk areas or medium-fire-risk areas. You will see more undergrounding in the years to come, but again, most of this stuff is happening in the high-fire-risk areas. One of the reasons why we don't underground everything is because your bills are already high enough, and if we undergrounded everything, your bills would be probably unaffordable. And the benefit that they would present, undergrounding would present for that cost isn't there. So, we are undergrounding in the highest-fire-risk areas first. I'm sure in the future we'll do more of it, but right now, we're not going to underground systems in urban areas unless there's some kind of situation on the ground that actually shows there's a high risk in a particular area. Our grid is very complex, it's very large, it's considered one of the oldest machines in America, kind of as a joke. And why I say old, it's because some parts of the grid are older, our poles and wires, much of it is meant to last for several decades, if not up to 80 years, sometimes they go to 100 years. But typically, 50 to 80 years is about the lifespan of a lot of our equipment. The technology that we're deploying, a lot of it's new, and you're seeing a lot of it now, this wasn't available even 10 years ago, some of this stuff. But we still have to rely on poles and wires. There's no wireless form of electricity, I wish there was. If I can invent it, I'll be the first trillionaire, I suppose. But we can't convey your electricity wirelessly, it has to be done on poles and wires, there's no other way to do it. I know a lot of people talk about old technology, outdated technology, why are we still using poles and wires? It's because there's no better solution for sending large amounts of electricity along the transmission lines, on the distribution system, and to your home. This brings up another point I'd like to make. There's a big difference between transmission and distribution. The transmission lines are the large ones, the ones that come on the big lattice towers, and those are really high in the air, those are conveying large amounts of electricity from the generation sources, right? And so that's basically the interstate highway system. The distribution system is the stuff you see on the street level, the stuff in your backyard, the stuff on the street corner. That's the distribution system. The distribution system is at a much greater risk for fire than the transmission system, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, the transmission system sits very high in the air. There's a couple of reasons why we do that, obviously, it's safer, we want to keep those high-powered lines far away from vegetation, and we also want to keep them into the air for a couple of other reasons. Some of you have probably heard of EMF, electromagnetic frequencies, I'm sure some of you have that question for me tonight. I can assure you, our system is safe with EMF. One of the reasons why those lines are so high is because the higher those lines are, the further you are away from the EMF emissions coming off those lines. On EMFs, you actually have a greater risk of harming yourself with EMFs with your cellphone than you do with the utility system, just to let you know. But, these two systems are very different. The transmission system, not as high-risk as the distribution system, and that has everything to do with where it's located. The distribution system is on the ground, it's in the street, it's in your backyard. It can be hit by cars, it can be brought down by Mylar balloons, which is something we're encouraging folks to not use anymore, because Mylar balloons, they're metallic, they can actually bring down our system if they're tangled up in the lines. This is why, these are some of the reasons why the distribution system is actually at greater risk for fire as opposed to the transmission system. Let's move on, please. A closer picture of covered conductor, let's move on, please. Let's keep going. Again, let's keep going, let's see, let's keep going. Okay, let's talk about public safety power shut-offs. This is really the reason we're all here tonight. Your power has been out for far too long, and the outages have been way too frequent. And again, I'm really sorry. I'm going to give you some of the logic behind how we make these decisions and the technology we use to make these decisions. I want to make sure that you know, the decision to de-energize your circuits not made in an unruly fashion, it's obviously very prescriptive, it's very much tied to government regulation and policy. The state of California, the CPUC, require all investor-owned utilities to have a PSPS protocol as part of their wildfire mitigation plan. They give us the final say as to how it's deployed, so that's why I'm in the room tonight, I'm going to walk you through some of that. But we have to have PSPS protocol. Someone asked earlier, why don't the municipal utilities have PSPS? Well, they're not required to, they're not governed by the CPUC like we are, and they probably don't want to irritate their residents like we have been in Grand Terrace. So there's a reason why they don't do it. Now, should they do it? I have a, you know, inside baseball, I wouldn't be surprised if the state starts requiring the municipal utilities to start submitting wildfire mitigation plans, too, they might be. But those are, again, those are managed by their own cities. We have to answer to the PUC and the California Legislature. This is how PSPS works. And again, this protocol, this is a protocol, it's not a technology, really, it's based on technology, the weather stations that we deploy throughout the system, but PSPS is a protocol, it's an operation, and I'll explain what that means. This idea has actually been around for a while. We've used it, I think we used it before we were required to. It happened in San Diego, I think, a few times, but this has been known for a while in the utility sector. If we are going to completely reduce the fire risk in a really bad situation, and I'm sorry, counsel, I keep looking at the audience, but I really want to address you all, if the weather system is bad enough, as it was this week, that is a tool of last resort that we can use in our toolbox, and the toolbox is very big, it has to have lots of tools in it, this is one of the tools. We will preemptively de-energize a circuit if we think your circuit and our equipment on it can start a fire. That's the last thing we want to do, obviously. We know that our system poses a certain wildfire risk in the region, and we don't want our system to be a part of any fires that we can obviously help. This is the last thing we want to do, is de-energize, but beyond that, of course, the very last thing we want to do is burn anything down with our system. So while this PSPS protocol is extreme and does shut you off for a while, and again, not all cities have been hit like Grand Terrace has, so we're going to talk about that. But this is a tool that we can use as a tool of last resort to completely shut off the likelihood or chance that our system can spark a fire in a high-wind, dry-conditioned event like we're experiencing this week in California. It's not perfect, and it relies on a lot of human beings working together to make sure that it runs as well as it can, and we're learning, every year we do this, how to do it better. We've come a long way, we used to actually, you know, the first few years of doing it, we made a lot of errors and mistakes, and we've learned from them, and we're still making them, and we're going to learn from them, which is why I'm here tonight, I want to hear all of your ideas or recommendations for us, because I know that you have special insight that I don't have, because my power hasn't been out for a week. So I look forward to listening to you all tonight. But PSPS is an important protocol. This is how it works. As soon as we believe there's going to be a wind event, typically it's wind, that is going to disrupt our system, we start taking a serious look at the grid and where the wind's going to be flowing, and what the humidity levels will be, et cetera. Again, this goes back to the weather stations that we've deployed throughout our system. We're constantly, every single moment of the day, and during these events, taking in data from those weather stations. Those weather stations are, again, at the neighborhood level, so we can tell if there's a wind, we can tell what the wind patterns and wind speed is in this particular area, and we can tell what it is in that particular area. Sam, Sam, I'm sorry, Southern California, as we all know, is very mountainous, lots of foothills. The topography here is really unruly, right? It goes up and down, there are lots of nooks and crannies, again, why, you know, building in the foothills will probably be a thing of the past in the future. The topography of our region dictates wind speeds and wind flows. So, you know, while your area, your circuit, your neighborhood might not have heavy winds, it's very possible that folks in the next city over, or the next circuit or two over, actually do have winds that are concerning to us and our meteorologists and fire staff and other experts on our team. So what we start doing is, we start notifying you as early as we possibly can. Typically, it's three or four days out, sometimes we can't get you that, we can't get to you that early because the event is, you know, fast-moving, let's say. But when we can, we give you the biggest heads-up that we can. We communicate with you via text and email. These are not pre-planned outages, right? These are not maintenance outages, so we can't send you letters, we can't send you letters weeks in advance like we would for a maintenance outage. The best we can do is communicate with you using digital methods, i.e., our website, of course, but your email and text messaging. All of you probably have an email address with us, and I'm sure a lot of you are getting a lot of messages from us via email, but not all of you have text messaging with us. I would encourage you to sign up for text messaging on our website. We cannot communicate with you in any way that you do not allow us to. So if you want to see, if you want the latest PSPS information, the next time this happens, please sign up for text message alerts, and we will alert you as quickly as we possibly can. We communicate with folks before, during, and after the events. We're letting you know as much as we possibly can what's happening when we can. This particular event was very fluid, I think you all know that, the wind speeds have come and gone, the winds have come and gone. Today, it was not very windy until, I don't know, about 2 o'clock, and the wind started picking up, and a fire in the river bottom behind my house started, sparked, and called for a large fire response. The winds are unruly, and we can't control them. So sometimes the notices are not as fast as you'd like them to be, and for that, I'm sorry. We'll do what we can to improve that over time. We do our very best to get the very latest information. latest information that we can. But as it relates to PSPS, these are not done in a, again, unruly fashion, they're very prescriptive, they're done very carefully, and we only do them when we feel we absolutely have to. Believe me, we don't want to shut your power off. Edison is full of, Edison, Southern California Edison is full of Southern California employees, residents, I'm one of them. A lot of our folks also were without power this week, and some of them actually were involved in evacuations, and I think we're actually going to have some home loss among our employees as well. So I can assure you, the very last thing your fellow Southern Californians who work for Edison want to do is shut your power off. Sometimes we feel that we have to. The problem with Grand Terrace is this. I asked, I said, "Why can't we?" And I sent, I've been communicating with your council this whole event, sending them text messages and emails, taking their calls, I've heard from some of you, I know what some of your concerns are, and we'll get into them tonight. But, um, the, uh, so, the, I'm sorry, public safety power shut-offs, the reason, okay, Grand Terrace, sorry. The reason why the PSPS activity is so bad in Grand Terrace, and I asked for a reason, I said, "Why can't we bring folks in Grand Terrace up? They've been out for, in some cases, an entire week. This is unacceptable." The answer that I received, and I believe it, this is true, you happen to be in a really serious cluster of utility infrastructure all around us. You notice the transmission lines coming from behind us here, that's called our west-of-dever transmission lines, relatively new. It brings renewable energy from the desert to this region. That comes into the substations that are up here on the hill above the 215 freeway. That makes this area more sensitive to outages, and I wish that wasn't the case, but it is. If one of the substations goes down from a fire, or a wind, because that can happen, lightning strikes also play a role in knocking out power in our substation, what we'll have is a catastrophic fire that goes beyond Grand Terrace, it'll reach all the cities around us that are fed by these substations just above us here. That is the complication that we're seeing here in Grand Terrace. That doesn't mean it excuses the length of time that you've been out, and the frequency with which you've been out, it doesn't. There is, though, an operational reason why this area's been hit harder than other areas. I am going to, moving forward, obviously, I'm working very closely with your elected officials, as I do with all of my cities, I'm going to do everything that I personally can to advocate for you in the, in the company, to make sure that we take care of what's going on here, okay? I've already been doing it, I've been activated the entire week since this event began, I've been working very closely with San Bernardino Emergency Operations Center folks, and we are in high gear. This is an all-hands-on-deck scenario, and it's, it's going 24/7, literally, we've got people working on this overnight, all night, it's, it's all hands on deck. We've got more than 3,000 people working, from our company alone, working this event to ensure that we, essentially, the whole purpose here with all of these activities is to prevent fire. We don't want to see what's happening in LA County happen here, that would make everything worse, obviously. All right, I would like to open it up for a lot of questions and comments. Counsel, mayor, I know you have some, and of course, I'm going to stick around for as long as you're all here. I don't know how we can do this in an organized fashion, but I would like to hear from all of you who want to speak with me. Again, you have my email address now, and I would love to hear from you. Again, I will do everything I can to bring your concerns to everyone in our company, including our executive management team, okay? I promise you that. Having said all this, that's the protocol in a nutshell, that's what we're doing to prevent fire in California. It's working. Fire officials in LA County right now are saying, "Actually, yes, it's true, the PSPS shut-offs are preventing fire." We have to figure out how to do it better, though, because it's a fine balance between reliability and keeping the fire at bay, and we're not doing a good job of it here. So I'm sorry for that. City council and mayor, I'm going to grab a glass of water, please fire away, I'll start answering your questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. And we'll start with Councilwoman Sabino, she, I'll wait till Mark gets back, and Jeff, I'm sure you've got questions, we'll just go down the road.
Thank you, Mark, for that presentation and for the explanation. Would you be interested in some donkeys for brush control in the area?
They do work, actually, and so do goats.
Well, we, we do tend to have them here, which leads me to my question. What is our schedule for vegetation management around your equipment?
The schedule is rotating, and I don't, I don't know exactly what it is for Grand Terrace, I can find out for you, of course, I'm in close contact with our vegetation management team, and of course, we always work with your city staff whenever they say, "Hey, Mark, we've got some vegetation growing in this particular right-of-way, please make sure it gets cleared." I can escalate those issues and get vegetation cleared faster. But we are in a schedule, we have to do this work across our entire service sector, which, again, is all of Southern California. But if, so if there's ever a concern that any of you have, notify your council member, they will talk to me, and if you feel like we're not maintaining our vegetation well enough in your city, let us know, and we will, we'll look into it and find out if we can get there faster. Sometimes we can, sometimes we have to keep our schedule, you can imagine we're having to do this work everywhere. But there are times where we can do this work a little bit faster if there is a, a need for it. But as it relates to the schedule in Grand Terrace, I'd have to find out.
Okay, thank you. And how many fire events has Grand Terrace had related to your equipment or in or around your equipment that has, do you, do you have a date or a number?
No, I don't have a number, I can look into that for you. Again, everything that you asked me tonight, of course, I'm going to go back and watch, and I'll take all your questions and make sure whatever I can't answer tonight, I'll find out for you. As it relates to how many fires our, our system has created in Grand Terrace, I have no idea, I'm not sure, I'm not aware of any, that doesn't mean that they haven't. It's, it's, it's not uncommon for there to be small-spot fires, sometimes underneath transmission lines, or rather, distribution lines. Those are typically, they're not common necessarily, but they are more common, of course, than a massive wildfire. Those are taken care of very quickly by first responders, fire departments, and so whenever that happens, that would be considered a fire caused by our system, and we will track that. I can find out how many of those kinds of issues we've had in Grand Terrace, and I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, and the city of Grand Terrace, over the last year or so, if not longer, has had a multitude of planned outages for service upgrades and whatnot. Can you tell us how many of those areas, including near Honey Hills and down Barton, where they are out now, were those replaced with some of the equipment that is actually there to safeguard our community?
I'll have to find out, I'll work directly with our district management team to find out if, exactly where that technology is deployed in your city. If it's in a high-fire-risk area, there's a good chance that this activity is already taking place there, I'm sure. Again, it's the high-fire designation areas, we, how we get to that conclusion is, we look at CAL FIRE, CAL FIRE makes determinations about where the high-fire-risk areas are, and they shift from time to time. The state of California, I think the PUC actually does its own, and then we have our own, and then we collate them, Edison does, so that we make sure we have a really good view of where the high-fire-risk areas are as they shift over time, depending on weather and climate. But as it relates to Grand Terrace, there are high-fire-risk areas here, I think you can probably all imagine where they are, and that is where you're going to see this technology taking shape. If you don't see some of this technology, let me know. If you think that there should be some of our new technology in a particular pocket of your city, please let me know, and I'll find out if we can do it for you.
Okay. My next question, pardon me. We have a vast number of residents who have underground service. Can you explain, with them having the underground service, why their service is down?
It's a great question, it's a very common one. Obviously, more and more, we're going to see undergrounding, I mean, neighborhoods now are built, HOAs are built with undergrounding, the developers pay for that, we don't, the developers do, and they pass the cost on to the homeowner. So we'll get this question more and more. Here's the answer. Below-ground circuits are connected to above-ground circuits, because at some point, all the lines have to hit the substation, and all the substations are above ground. So, while underground, an underground system creates physical beauty in your neighborhood, you don't have to see the lines that a lot of older neighborhoods do, the ones that were built with the, the poles and the wires above ground, that's one of the main benefits, but it's not a magic bullet, it does not prevent outages, and if your circuit, your underground circuit is connected to an above-ground circuit, and in some cases, there's circuitry overlaps, and in some cases, you might be connected to two circuits down the road, and that happens to be five miles away, let's say, it could be miles long. If that circuit is at risk from a fire, we'll shut it down, and as a result, you'll be knocked out as well. Again, we're doing everything we can to sectionalize and get better at being surgical with the outages, but we are constrained by a massive system, we are, we are constrained by physics, we have to send electrons along metal poles and wires, and there are constraints with that, obviously, physics plays a role here.
And then, we talked about switching, which I have some understanding of how that works. What percentage of Grand Terrace, I mean, right now, we have about 1,400 people out, is, are the circuits maxed out, that we cannot bring anyone else up to carry that load right now, and switching and offloading to other circuits?
If you haven't been switched, we can't do it. The reason why you're out, and believe me, I mean, no one, no one is happy about this. The fact that Grand Terrace has been out this long has been frankly frustrating for so many of us, and so none of us want this. The reason why your power is out, because we can't get it back on for the reasons I stated, obviously, fire risk, but also the cluster of equipment over here on the hill, and also the circuitry, the way it's, the way it overlaps, the way it's interconnected, all these things combine and prevent us and the folks who are making the final call at our EOC to engage in PSPS. For them and their expertise, they believe that the power should remain out.
Okay. And you explained and gave us kind of a, a general layout of the technology that y'all are implementing with regard to weather stations, meteorologists, and such. Grand Terrace has been about 48 hours with no wind. When is the last time that equipment has been calibrated so that way it's detected more accurately in our region?
Here's how this, this works, because this is a very common question. Why is my power out, the wind isn't blowing? There's a couple of reasons for that. One, out of an abundance of caution, I'm sure you all love hearing that kind of phrase, out of an abundance of caution, the, we will keep a circuit de-energized if we think the wind is still playing a role. You might not see it, but it can come back very quickly, that's one reason. Another reason is, again, has to do with the interconnectedness of the circuitry. Again, if the circuitry of the road is being affected by wind, again, going back to the topography of the land, that you're protect, they're, they're, let's say, they're not protected from the wind because of how the mountain curves around, but you are, you don't see any wind, that's another reason why, even in the absence of wind, you will see outages. Another reason is because after a PSPS outage, this is part of the protocol, we have to do it this way. When we de-energize with PSPS, to re-energize, we have to do in-person, on-the-ground inspections. We're not doing them in an automated way, we're not doing them with drones, and we can't do them at night. The reason why we're doing that, again, out of an abundance of caution, we want to make sure there's no tree limbs on a hidden part or an unseen part of our line. We don't want to just come in and go, look around and say, "Oh, the wind's off, let's bring them back up now." We want to make sure that there is no disruption on the line that was caused by the wind that you all, let's say, can't see, because it's behind a hill or something. We have to do those inspections before we re-energize. Sometimes that can take up to eight hours, depending on the situation. Again, we're spread very thin with this event, this is a, this is a system-wide event, practically, and so we're spread thin. And so, the, those kind of inspections are taking longer than they normally would. They don't always take hour, eight hours, but in this scenario, they are taking longer. So we have to inspect them to make sure that they're safe before you switch them on. If a wind, if, if a tree limb fell on our line, and we weren't able to detect it, let's say, with our technology, the, the next best way to detect it, or perhaps the first best way, is to see it with men on the ground, men and women on the ground who can inspect the lines and the equipment with their eyes, to make sure, proof positive, that there's no anomalies in the system that will create a fire if we bring you back up. Some will also ask the question, "We were knocked out, we were brought back up, then we were knocked out again." Again, this is all tied to those, really, those two things. Wind, the behavior of the wind, and where it's affecting our circuitry, and the inspections that it takes to bring the power back up. If we were to knock your power out, and we, believe me, we want to bring your power back up, but if we did it too hastily, we could very easily, after, in eight hours of inspection, bring your power back up, the wind returns, now it's back out again, that work will have been done, frankly, you know, it would have been a waste of time and resources, frankly. So, we're erring on the side of caution, and we're deciding to keep the power out to avoid that issue. I realize there's a lot of nuance and a lot of complexity, and it doesn't bring you satisfaction for the outages, I understand that. These are the decision points that we have to make as a company to ensure that in these PSPS protocols and during these high-fi, high-fire-risk days, high-wind days, that we make sure that our system is working as well as it can to prevent fire.
Thank you. Two last questions, and then I will complete my time. If I understood correctly, distribution lines are usually the greatest cause, and those are the large towers. And as far as my knowledge is concerned, I don't believe Grand Terrace has any trees that reach the elevation of your lines, and so, considering that it needs to be viewed to make sure that we don't have the, the brush of the trees, and it would be physically impossible for us to grow a tree at that, you know, elevation over time. What, what level of, for lack of a better term, logic is Edison using to state, "Well, they don't have the debris in place, so let's bring them back up," because we know that nothing in that region grows anything to our elevation?
Yeah, so, are you talking about transmission lines, the really tall ones? So as it relates to the transmission lines, one of the reasons why they're so high is so that trees can't reach them, which is why you don't see trees getting anywhere near, typically.
Sorry, I misspoke. So the, the transmission lines, you, I think you stated, those are usually the biggest cause?
Distribution, the smaller-scale stuff, yeah.
Okay.
It is, because they're lower, they're lower to the ground, they're on the street corners, there're wooden poles in your backyard, they're interacting with your trees. With vegetation management, we can keep the risk low and the lights on while keeping the trees in your backyard and on your, the front of your property, so we don't cut down trees, nobody wants that either. We have topped trees before, and it, you know, it doesn't look great, and people hate it. So, we do our very best, there's a balance there that has to be struck. How much do we control the vegetation when it comes to, for example, historic trees, even if they're approaching our lines? We do have the ultimate goal and, or responsibility and right to chop down anything that's in, in coming onto our system, anywhere near, we, we get to make that call. But we also don't want to chop everyone's trees down.
And our customers can call you to, to have those cleared? Okay.
Yes, in fact, we want to help you clear your lines in your backyard, or in your neighborhood. If you see an Edison line that is being encroached upon by vegetation, again, you can, you can call us directly, you can call our 800 number, or you can let your city council members know, they'll reach me, and I will look into how we can go about and actually do that work for you. Sometimes, in fact, we were doing this during our big push for vegetation management, the first big push that we were doing, we were making it very well-known that we wanted to cut down whatever vegetation you have in your backyard that is coming close to our lines. So that was a good benefit for a lot of folks, if that's you, we can make that happen.
And then, my last question, CARP has issued a, they have alleviated their stringent regulations on generators, and so they put out a public statement, there's a press release, I believe, on January 10th. However, consumers are still not able to access those generators, we can't get them shipped, we have no access to them. Who's, who's communicating with those organizations? I mean, even down to Home Depot or Lowe's, we can't get anything shipped here, and based on your statements here today, we need to be ready to be shut down often.
It is, I think everyone probably now realizes, generators are going to be a thing of the future for all of us, whether it's small ones for our homes, that we can keep our lights on, or our refrigerators on, and our devices charged, and for the larger commercial facilities, the senior centers, for redundancy purposes, I think generators are going to be where it's at in the future, if this is, if this protocol continues the way it has been. So generators are going to play a huge role. We offer at Edison, on our website, if you Google SCE Generator Rebate, we offer instant rebates on our website, you can buy them directly from us, and we've, we've sourced the generators that you can use, you can buy from us, and there's an instant rebate off of, on them. We did hear in this particular event that some of the generators that we are providing rebates on don't meet the California Air Resources Board air quality rules, so they can't be shipped here. So I learned about that.
About 90%?
I'm sorry?
About 90% of them are inaccessible?
90%? I hadn't heard that number, I'll look into it. I did know that this was an issue, and I notified our folks, and let them know that those, those generators that can't be shipped here need to be taken off the website. So it's definitely something we're going to work on, I'll make sure that we only from now on, put generators on the website that can be shipped here. And, and so, yeah, California Air Resources Board tight rules around generators. And by the way, since we're talking about generators, if you're already using them, obviously, you saw one coming in, the ones that are on diesel and, and gas, they spew fumes, so please don't use them in your homes, please keep, and I have, it sounds funny, but I have to say that, some folks do set them up inside their homes, and that can be very, very dangerous for a number of reasons. Keep the generators outside and run an extension cord to your appliances. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's my line.
Thanks, Mayor.
I was just looking on the SCE website, there's 240 portable generators for sale on the SCE website, so if 90% of them are non-CARP compliant, that still leaves you 24 to choose from. I reckon that's what it sounds like to me. I don't have a generator, but I was talking with our code enforcement officer, she did give one of these CARP-compliant generators to SCE. Really, she just raved about it, had a big $600 rebate on it, it was a great deal. And so, I was just going to ask you one thing though, Mark. I think the next page in your presentation might be one of the more important ones, can we flip to it?
Sure.
Please?
Let's go to it.
The one called PSP Customer Programs and Resources?
Yep.
Yeah, there you go, because what, I mean, on a, on a, maybe, you know, we can talk about something that's helped people out here a little bit.
Yeah. So, Edison, we, we understand that these outages are obviously very, very devastating for a lot of folks, especially when they happen like this. So, we do what we can to help provide some level of comfort when these outages take place. As part of our wildfire mitigation plan, we have deployed what we call Customer Resource Centers and Community Crew Vehicles. Basically, if you see that van in your neighborhoods, because there's probably an outage somewhere, and we've deployed staff to go to that, to drive that vehicle to your location, a central location that you can go to for answers and information and charging. The CRCs, those are the Community Resource Centers, we set those up in conjunction with cities ahead of the, the events. So, these have already been well-laid out in, before the events take place. The CRCs are basically community centers typically, run by the cities, and we have an agreement with them, they let us use them for this purpose. And they act basically as a cooling or warming center, just like there are warming centers all throughout the cities in the Southland. It's, it works in the same way, only with these, we have people there that you can come ask questions of or yell at, and we're there to answer those questions, you can also charge. So, we typically prioritize facilities that are in low-fire-risk areas so that if there is an issue, they don't get de-energized, right? So, they have power. That's what we do for that particular column there. Customer programs, we always encourage people in incidences like this to call 211. A lot of folks have asked us, does Edison provide, if you're going to knock our power out, do you provide generators? The answer you could probably imagine is no, we can't possibly provide generators to every household that we serve. Sometimes, in some situations, we can provide large-scale generators, the ones that come on the backs of semi-trucks, we can park them, they take lots of fuel, and we can park them for days on end, and it can char, it can power a neighborhood, or in this case, a senior center. With this event being as widespread as it was, and most of the activity being desperately needed in LA County, the generator capacity has gone, has gone. Even, I, I might understand, if you go to the local stores, I don't know if any of you can confirm this, local stores are running out of generators, but the large-scale ones that we often provide as a service, when we, when we have a critical customer out, we don't have access to those either during this event because it's so wide-scale, we can't do it unfortunately. So, we encourage folks to call 211. 211 is a local, I think it's a government or a county-run program, and they basically are your, your one-stop shop for any and all services that you might think you need during an emergency. That would include generators. I did know, I do know that during this event, they were helping folks find generators for their homes. So, that's 211. Another thing I wanted to mention, for those of you or loved ones who are on Oxygen, Sleep App machines, any assistive device that requires electricity that keeps you healthy and alive, I want to make sure that you sign up for our medical baseline program. Google it, you can find it really easily, it's easy to sign up, takes a little while to get approved for it because we have to do some verification, but if you rely on an assistive device like Oxygen, you can apply for our medical baseline programs. That does two really important things. One, it'll give you a discount, that's good. Two, it puts you on a list of our vulnerable, most vulnerable customers, so we know where they are in a, in an evacuation situation. For example, other agencies keep this information too, but since we are directly getting it from the customers because we're providing them with the service that powers those devices, we know where these folks are, but if you don't volunteer or opt-in, we don't know, we can't, we can't help you, we can't. I mean, if you have a neighbor that you think should be on this program, please encourage them to sign up. Again, there is a discount involved on their utility bill, and we prioritize them in terms of making sure that they're okay in an evacuation scenario or a major disaster. We will actually coordinate directly with first responders to make sure that they're getting their door knocked on if there's, in, in the case of LA County, evacuations. That's, we have all kinds of rebates on our website. Again, check our website out for all the rebates that you can get on for your home, there are other rebates that we offer, but these are the ones that are really critical for incidences like this.
And that Critical Care Backup Battery Program is available also?
Yes.
For folks who may need something like that?
That's correct.
That's who you're referring to with the Oxygen portable, like assist?
Yeah, so we have, we have-
Medical devices?
Yeah, we have two programs that kind of, they overlap a little bit, but the medical baseline program is the one for folks who are on devices.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. So, I know what you, I even have had, my trees in my backyard were trimmed by your trimmers, and I have read on social media about, there are a lot of people in Grand Terrace that have that, had that service done, and that's at no cost, I might add, and I thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to mention to folks whenever you, you know, you're wondering about the cost of undergrounding a cable, we have an undergrounding cable, undergrounding fund in the city, and I learned when we were studying that, that it's about a quarter of a million dollars to underground one pole, one pole. And that if you've got a pole that's got connections to it, like if you go down here to Mr. TV Video, there's a pole right beside the rotating sign, that pole is a million dollars because it's got four lines coming into it. So, yeah, that's the reason undergrounding is so expensive, that's why it's not done. Just wanted to throw that out there and let you guys a little know something about that.
Sure. Yeah, and it's harder to underground in California because we have very hard rocky ground, mountainous ground, it's harder to underground in these areas. It's much easier to underground in places like the south or back east where they have large swaths of soft, flat land, and you see it more, I think, in places like that. It's very hard for us to do it in California because of our ground, the topography, it's very costly, very expensive, and we are already, all of you who pay Edison bills, are paying more for your Edison bill than folks virtually anywhere else in the country. I think Hawaii might pay more, but they're an island. Utility rates in California are as high as they've ever been, and that's a problem also. So, while we do this work, we also have to balance out customer costs. So, while we're doing the wildfire mitigation costs, which is the main driver of your current and most recent rate increases, we also have to modernize the grid because at the very same time that all of this is happening, energy demand is set to triple over the next few decades. Why? Because of things like AI, quantum computing, Bitcoin mining, and the, also, it's tied to grid modernization and, and fulfilling a state mandate to completely decarbonize our energy resources by 2045. That's not that long away. For how long it takes for us to build grid-scale equipment, like substations and transmission lines, it takes many, many years to get them approved and licensed, and they're very costly. We have to do all that work before we can actually do this energy transition that you've probably heard of. In the state of California, gas-powered cars are on their way out, I think you probably all have probably heard of that. And so, increasingly, Californians, Southern Californians are going to be relying on SCE to supply not only their power for their homes and businesses, but now for their cars, their trucks, their vans, all of the trucking that you see on the freeways, the state wants everything to be electrified. That's putting a tremendous challenge before us as a company. So, we're doing our very best to manage all of these priorities from the state and from the regulator. We think the energy transition is a good thing, we think, you know, clean air and renewable energy is a good thing, so we're not opposed to that at all, but it will come. We have to dramatically increase the speed at which we do this work, otherwise, we'll never hit that goal, and, you know, if there's only EEVs to buy in California, you're going to have a hard time powering them when there's a brownout or a flex alert during the summer. So, Edison, utility companies in California, we are balancing a lot of really challenging priorities from the state and from our own priorities, and so, it's, it's, this is a new era in utility infrastructure development, and we are doing our very best to manage these challenges for you. And again, we want to keep your rates as low as we can, they're already as high as they, as they've, as they've ever been. And so, when folks say, why don't you underground everything, one of the reasons is because we don't want your bill to be any higher than it already is.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. We did have an opportunity to talk a little bit, so I appreciate that heads up. I think it's not news to anybody that's here about how do we wash our clothes? How do we dry our clothes? How do we use electric water heaters when there's no electricity? How do we do security? How do we have home-based businesses? How do we have water well service? How do we do car charging? And electric stoves? And TV internet? But here's, here's my question, because I was thinking about what people used to have back in the 1800s, you know, it, this stuff's only been around for 125 years, plus or minus.
Yep.
Most of the electrical facilities in the United States didn't even come into being until 1913. So, a lot of the rural areas never even saw electricity until that timeframe, and so, as we start to walk around with these little lamps in our hands, that's the way all our ancestors did it. And up until that timeframe, there wasn't any electricity. But I have a particular question, and I'd like to see if there's been any discussion with that, and that is, fireplaces. A lot of houses have fireplaces, and they haven't been snagged somehow by these stupid regulations that the state has made that you can't have a real fireplace, but you can have some kind of phony baloney thing, right? So, I have a masonry fireplace, I made sure I was in there in time, 1983 is when my house was built. With that masonry fireplace, I can't operate it. Have there been any discussions with the sweet governor about, you know, the one that, that, no, the one that appoints all these CPUC know-nothings, whether or not we can suspend some of these environmental things that they're talking about? I know in Palisades, they talked about suspending environmental checks in order to be able to get rebuilt. What about suspending the environmental requirement that not, doesn't allow us to use our fireplaces in our houses? I'd like to be warned.
That is the $1 million question. How can we reduce red tape in California to allow, well, frankly, we're going to need a lot of red tape slashed to get Pacific Palisades built back up and other communities in LA County, and they're saying they're going to do it, and I hope they do. Red tape is a problem in California, it's a problem for us too. It takes, I'll give you one example, the, you have a new transmission line going overhead here, I was here for that when it was energized. I don't know how long that one took, but I can tell you that there's one being planned for Riverside. Riverside has its own utility, and what they've asked us to do is build a new transmission line connection for them so they have a backup connection to the state power grids for resiliency purposes. They're a growing city, energy demand is going up, it's a resiliency issue. It took us nearly 15 years, about 12 to 15 years, to get the license from the CPUC to build it, and it cost roughly $35 million for the license. That's without a single stick going into the ground. We then had to face another three or so years of NIMBYism, not in my backyard. NIMBYism has a place, but it also can throw a wrench in the works for building projects. And so, we finally got the approvals we need at the local level, and we're going to build it. But when it's done, it's going to take four years to build, and bear in mind, in order to electrify everything, we need hundreds of new miles of transmission lines across the state. This is a 10-mile line. When it's all done, it will have taken 20 years, and half a billion dollars, actually. So, red tape is a problem. We released, every year, we release a new white paper, a paper that we want everyone to read, but really, it's for lawmakers at the state and local and national level. Our most recent one came out not long ago, it's on our website, if you go to SCE White Papers, you'll find it. We basically said in this document, Edison thinks that we can meet the demand of the state policies, we think we can get there, but not at the pace we're going now. We have to dramatically increase the speed at which we can transition the energy system so that we can do things like electrify everything. If we can't build new substations and transmission lines, there will be no energy transition. There can't be, it comes down to physics. And so, one of our questions for the state is, you know, what can we do to reform some of the policies that are in place that make it take so long to build new transmission lines and substations?
Fire sacrament. Okay, thank you. I guess I'd really like to know also, how do you, you know, what I heard in the discussion was is that you, that there is some correlation with the, between the high-risk areas that have been specified by the fire departments, or CAL FIRE, and SCE circuits. How do you do that now? Because obviously, there hasn't been in the past. For some reason, you know, the, the, there ha, there hasn't been a meeting of the maps, so to speak. So, we have fire, high-fire-risk areas, but then, they don't necessarily dovetail into the way things are taken care of by SCE in your facilities. So, how does that fit in the long run? Because if it's going to happen again and again, I see that as a major problem.
Well, so, it sounds like you're asking about how we prioritize the work that has to be done, the investments, is that right, in high-fire-risk areas?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, all the wild, the wildfire mitigation work, the vast majority of it is happening in the high-fire-risk areas, again, the foothills and the mountains. Some of it's happening in lower-fire-risk areas. Not a whole lot's happening in the urban areas because there's concrete and asphalt everywhere, and the fire risk is much lower. But we rely on, again, the maps that come out from the state and our own maps to determine where, and where that work should be done. We also consult internally, we work with our local district offices. Every city is served by a district office, which basically organizes all of the physical labor and work that happens on the system from that one office. Grand Terrace is served by our brethren's district office, and that district office helps make that call, because these are the people on the ground, they have the, the greatest awareness of what state the, the equipment is in, and where that work should be prioritized. So, is it in a high-fire-risk area? And then, let's get the internal experts to help us, to guide us to where that work has to be done first.
Okay, so, it's getting better, is what you're telling me?
It is.
It is, okay. So, that, you know, brings up another little question I'd like to kind of dispel. This stuff's been in existence for about 100 years. We get the impression that somewhere along, like telegraph lines, that power got kind of pasted together as it, as the demand came along. But how often, then, does Edison actually, well, I should say SCE, how often does SCE basically replace all of its facilities? Because I know in our water system, you know, our local water system, Riverside Highland, they have a plan in place where they turn around and they replace pipelines and so on.
Yep.
Valves, whatever else.
Yep.
That keeps everything in fairly decent working shape. But unfortunately, City of LA doesn't, because the City of LA has tons of stuff that runs through their metro area, and if they were going to try to replace any of that stuff, it would take forever, so they do it on, on, you know, a fire sale. I mean, basically, when something blows up, they go fix it.
Yeah.
Other than that, you know, and get fixed, you know, they just hope for the best.
Well, I am happy to tell you that we have very robust capital improvement plans for every city that we serve. In fact, every year, we give a reliability report to each city. You've received them before. If you ever want me to come, give that information to you at the, at the podium, I can, it's kind of boring, but what we tell you in that report is, all the work we've done in Grand Terrace on your circuits over the last year, and what we're going to be doing in the next, like, three years. And it's all color-coded, coded, it's really easy to see what circuits are going to be addressed next, and what kind of projects are going in. Is it undergrounding? Is it, is it automation on the pole itself? It's very prescriptive, very well-planned, and we're doing it years out.
Great, so what you're telling me is, is it's getting better? It's going to be getting better?
I would say so, yeah, yeah, I would say so. The, the grid is becoming far more complex. Obviously, it's not the grid of the 20th century, it's now the grid of the 21st century, and the technology's moving very, very quickly. And so, we are now, the challenge now is, let's find the grid scale, meaning it's the technology we can deploy affordably across the whole system, let's find the technology that we can deploy at, at scale that will improve our operations. And so, there's new stuff coming out all the time, it's, it's a great time to be in the utility sector, other than today, but, because there's so many exciting things coming, so many exciting technologies coming, and we're going to use as many of that, as much of that technology as we can to make the system more reliable and more secure and, and safer.
Last question. Are you guys having, well, I, you know, with, with this knowledge that we have in the SCE area, 90,000 miles of wiring, when you think about that, that's four times around the earth. That's a lot of wire to try to take, to keep track of, right? But in that, when we have these PSPSs, which all, none of us want, and we all admit that we hate the idea, are you having conversations with the vendors? Because I went to the store, and I think a lot of people have, and the first thing you see is a big sign on the front that says, "No generators, sorry." You know, those that, that thought about it out front and had the cash raced over there and jumped on all the generators, right? But how many generators are really stocked in a hardware store on a regular basis? Are you, are, is SCE having those kinds of conversations with the vendor, vendors, so that we at least have the availability? I mean, I'd like to at least have the choice to have an eight thousand, you know, fire-breathing generator, watt generator, in my, in my backyard that I can upset all my neighbors with, with the noise until midnight, or better. I'd rather have that and have to gas the thing up like-
You gotta get approval from CARB first.
-ten minutes, than I would not be able to.
Yeah. Um, the shorter answer is, I don't think we're doing that right now with generators. We've done things like that before, working directly with stores for in-store rebates on all kinds of things, efficient, usually energy efficiency stuff. Will we do that for generator, generators? Um, I can tell you, we're looking at everything we can do to make generators more affordable for our customers, uh, and that means buying down the cost through instant rebates on our website. Will we do that, will we do this with stores? Uh, I haven't heard that yet, but I can pose that idea to folks who run that program, and if we can do it, we will. I know that we, we've, we've done stuff like that before.
Yeah, please get these guys in the queue, because we don't wanna go looking all over the United States to try to find, find a generator, if that's what we choose to do.
Right. And you want it right away, obviously, in a situation like this. You want it right away, you don't have time for it to be shipped. So, um, it's a great idea, and we've done it before on other things like light bulbs and things. So, um, can we do it with this? I think the answer is yes. Uh, I have to find out if we, where we are with that, and I'll find out for you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark, and I appreciate you having the guts to be here. Um, yeah, that's all I've got.
Can I, can I actually, uh, mention something else that's very, very basic and common for our company and for all of you, actually, too, but it's not very well-known? It's important to note, Edison does not generate profit from the sale of electricity. Those are pass-through costs. In other words, we charge you what it costs for us to get the electrons to your door. Under the regulatory compact that I mentioned earlier, that is the, that is the, uh, compact that says, we'll let you monopolize, but, um, you can't make, uh, you can't generate profit by selling electricity. You can only generate profit through a approved rate of return on investment, meaning we only make money as a company profit for our shareholders, 'cause I think you all know we're publicly traded on the stock market, which means, by the way, our books are completely open. If you ever wanted to see anything with our books, they're completely open. Um, so in order to generate profit, we have to build things, we have to improve the grid and make it stronger and better. So I'll give you a really quick example. This is not an accurate example, but it's an easy one. If we put a pole in the ground and it costs us a hundred dollars to do that, the CPUC says, with your current rate of return, and this gets adjusted every few years, right now, generally it hovers around, I don't wanna irritate my finance people, but twelve to, uh, ten to twelve percent, let's say. Um, that's the profit margin that typically the state allows us to put on top of building projects. So if the pole costs a hundred dollars to put in the ground, we can then earn ten dollars on top of that, and that's the profit. That's how we earn profit. We don't do it by selling electricity. So you, when your rates go up, they go up, not because we're trying to price gouge and get more money out of you from your use of electricity. We're not allowed to do that, and we wouldn't wanna do that anyway. We can only do it when we approve the system. And obviously, we have a lot of improving to do.
Matt?
Good evening, Mark. Thank you for being here. Um, I really appreciate you coming out and taking the bullets tonight. Um, I, I think everyone here should know that this was Mark's choice. He, he reached out to us, and, um, a lot of these representatives aren't visiting every community. He made Grand Terrace his first stop, so it's, um, really nice to have you come out and face our residents and hear from them directly. And he's done a good job of communicating back, uh, to the Chanick man at Edison, but, um, I just wanna apologize in advance if I come across angry. It is, I'm pissed. This is unacceptable. You said it's unacceptable, but those are just words. I wanna see action out of Edison. So, I don't, I don't know if you were, you were-
Hold on, hold on, Matt. Audience, if we're gonna yell out, let's maintain general order in here, all right? I know everybody's upset, but, yeah, we don't need to be, you know, throw Mark under the bus and stuff, so just keep your comments to yourself, please. Go ahead, Councilor Brown.
Mark's a really good guy, and he's always helpful, so you can expect to receive emails from him and follow up. Um, but, uh, I don't know if you were on the call the other night. A couple nights ago, the mayor and I, I think Councilmember Sabino was also on a call with a couple hundred local elected officials from around Southern California, and, uh, Southern California CEO and President Stephen Powell. And quite frankly, I think the guy is tone-deaf. He doesn't get it. Um, there were questions asked, so, I, I, I should say, you know, we talk about, uh, when you de-energize a line and you turn our power off, how long does that take?
For, for a PSPS outage?
Correct.
It all depends on the weather.
Okay. So we're told that it's gonna take up to eight hours to restore our energy at any given time. So Mr. Powell says, "I've got plenty of people out in the field." He, he, there's no concern from, at his level, about having enough troops on the ground to re-energize our lines and turn our lights back on when the weather conditions change. So I wanna see changes at the state level, and I've been reaching out and talking to our local legislators, but I think everyone in this room and everyone that's impacted by these outages, we, we need to have a voice at, with Sacramento to get some of these regulations changed. But I wanna see pressure put on Edison, quite frankly, because these timelines are unacceptable by any means. Um, but getting back to him, there were a lot of questions asked from our own mayor here. None of his answers were even reasonable. I, I feel like there's a blatant disregard for those of us that are relying on Edison for service. Um, and, and a lot of us in this room, we're blessed, and, you know, some of us have generators, some don't, but we, we get by, but there's a lot of people that are hurting. And we see it out there every day in our community, and there's been a lot of talk about, you know, the Blue Mountain Senior Villas, but it goes beyond that. That's just the most, the high, the highly visible group of people in our community that are impacted. But to be without power for seven days when there's no wind is, is just unfathomable. I, I can't believe you guys are letting this happen. So you mentioned the, and I forget the name of the project, but this transmission project from the desert that brings in the renewable edge, energy to our substation.
Yes.
So when you mentioned that project, did you say that that project actually increases our risk here in Grand Terrace?
Um, I don't think it increases the risk necessarily. What it does do is, it brings a lot of really important infrastructure right to this area. Um, I mean, if that transmission line were to go down, it would be catastrophic because it feeds so many people, whereas a small circuit in your city serves only a neighborhood. So that substation and the transmission lines, uh, being there, uh, they are critically important to reliability across the region. Do they increase your fire risk? The more infrastructure, the more utility infrastructure there is, the higher the risk.
All right. And that's what I thought you said, because to me, that means I pay really high rates, and I'm paying for that infrastructure that only increases my risk of my power being turned off. So despite what you said about restoration of power and the fact that light is needed and we have to have people have their human eyes on it, um, I think a lot of people in this room, uh, like myself, who've been without power for a week, um, well, we did have an eighteen-hour reprieve, um, the power was actually restored at four-thirty AM, and I think it was dark at that time. So those are just facts that, you know, you may wanna check with your team. Um, anyhow, I wanna know what the timeline is for hardening the distribution lines in Grand Terrace, and I think that information should be shared with everyone in the city so we know when we can actually have some anticipation of when we'll have reliable power again.
Yeah. Um, so as, so we do our annual reliability reports, as I mentioned earlier. We talk about, we show you how reliable your city is as compared to other cities across the region and, uh, across the, the state. Um, we have to submit that information to the CPUC. In that reliability, uh, uh, update, we will show you the capital improvement projects coming to Grand Terrace. We do those roughly every, um, June or July or so. They come out, those numbers come out in the spring for us, and then someone like me would come to your city council and present that to you publicly. But I always present it to your staff and your council by, by statute, um, via email. I always ask, "Would you like me to do a rundown of this information? Would you simply like to receive and file it?" We're required to do that. Typically, folks will say, "Just receive and file, we'll take a look at it later." But given what the situation we're in now, I think that reliability report's gonna be very important for Grand Terrace.
Well, I'm sure we'll be inviting you back in the spring.
Yep, and I will bring, I will bring our local district manager, who manages all of the actual work that takes place on the grid. I will bring him here, and you can ask, ask him whatever you'd like.
Thank you. Well, once again, I, I wanna thank you for being here. I wanna keep my comments brief, because I, I want you to hear from everyone here who submitted comments, and love to hear your response, but I do appreciate you. You know, like I said, I'm angry, and there are a lot of people here that are angry, but we have good reason to be there, and there are a lot of people that are hurting in the community, and I don't feel like, what I heard from Mr. Powell was, he's totally out of touch. And when it all comes down to money, that, you know, you guys don't wanna re-energize our lines only to have to take them down, and again, we don't care. That's your job. You're, you're to deliver our electricity. And if the wind dies down, you should turn it back on. And then if, hey, if the wind kicks up twelve hours later, so be it, then turn it off, but don't make us sit for a week.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep, you got it.
So, uh, Mark, one question, and one of the residents brought this to, um, you know, I know you guys are in the making power, but far as solar lights, streetlights, is there any way Edison, you know, with this going on, that there's some kind of policy or some kind of thing that we could get some streetlights for our neighborhoods who are down? And even like, you know, when our business section was down because it was pitch black and, you know, safety concerns on there?
Do you mean like a temporary, like, light source, like, you'd find out for the outage?
Well, solar lights, that's, streetlights that are gonna be there permanently, that we could hook on poles just for, uh, a backup?
Sure. Um, we can explore that with our streetlight group, which I will get us in touch with.
Okay. Also, um, a lot of residents here, food loss. What can they do to get with Edison on recouping some of their losses?
Yeah. So, um, we have a claims process. Uh, I don't have the link off the top of my mind, I think it's in this deck, I'm sure it is. Google SCE Claims. It will take you to the very, uh, it'll be the very top entry. Go to the website, uh, it will walk you through exactly how it's done, and if you feel you have a valid claim, submit it to the, to the company, and our claims department will take a look at it. Um, you have to have a lot of really good evidence, so whatever evidence you have, pictures, receipts, whatever, um, submit it. I will say, uh, and I think this is what you're probably, uh, waving about it-
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. We can't be speaking like that.
Forgive me. Typically, for things like lost food, the utility companies in California don't reimburse for that. Usually, they reimburse for something like, you know, did we, did we damage something in your neighborhood, uh, or, you know, did our outages cause a major appliance to, uh, to break? That might be something, but typically, it's not for food and medicine. However, please still submit the claims anyway, especially for this event.
Well, if we're gonna make this, uh, a new norm, why can't we go ahead and get reimbursed for a PSPS? I mean, this is, you know, you're saying something about being breaking, I mean, you're breaking a lot of people's, you know, livelihood. I mean, this is hurting a lot of people, so why can't Edison change the rules and regulations on this to reimburse these people the, the food? They keep the receipts, they take pictures of the food, they get some kind of evidence because this is not right for them. I mean, they're, especially seniors when they go shopping at the beginning of the month, and look at, the last two times their power's been out at the beginning of the month.
Sure. Um, that's not available now, but can it be in the future? It might be. I have to run that up. I mean, obviously, you know, that's gonna be a decision made at the very top. And so if that's a possibility, it will be made there, but I, I can assure you, I will make that recommendation to the company.
All right. So, um, you talked about, you know, um, circuits and crossovers, and one of our things, you know, to the senator was talking about, you know, how our senior apartments, which are privately owned, and, um, how can we get where the senior apartments, you know, the rezoning and the re-grid, 'cause, you know, I know there's power transformers, you know, lines in front of them, but there's, you know, there's hardly anything there. And like, yeah, the, their neighbors behind them have power, so how could we re-establish and re-zone this? 'Cause there's gotta be a way to do this, where we're not crossing over and stuff. Because you have people on the other side of Mount Vernon who's on the same circuit I am that with no power, but then you'll get people like right next to the hill who have power. But how can we make it policy where seniors are never turned off, their, uh, facilities are never turned off because they're our most vulnerable, you know, anywhere, this is statewide? So how could Edison do something like that?
The best way we can do that is through the equipment itself. Can we prioritize, uh, vulnerable populations, facilities, in this case, a senior center, with some of the technology that we're talking about that allows us to sectionalize? Is that possible? Yes. But that is gonna come from the local district office, which I will talk to you about that specifically for this city and for that site. I'll ask them what the possibilities are around, um, improving technology that feeds that site. The answer might be, no, we can't, but I'll look.
So we'll, we'll push for it, and then, you know, we're gonna have our state assembly and our state senator push for it. Um, but yeah, sometimes when we think, you know, we gotta think outside the box in it, especially for our seniors, 'cause they can't buy generators at that place, they can't do, you know, they're using candles, and when I went there yesterday, the fire alarms weren't working. We have a life safety code. So I called our city manager, we made sure we had security over there to do it. I wasn't leaving until it was done. But going back on that, you talked about how people can get a discount for medical baselines and stuff. Well, that senior complex is on one big bill, so when our seniors call to try to get those services, they are not the, the account holder. So, and then they try to get with the management there, and we're getting, you know, they're getting bypassed. So how could our seniors at the apartments, who aren't account holders, get part of these programs that they desperately need?
They can certainly sign up for the medical baseline program and, uh, and, uh, make themselves known to our operators so that we know where they are. Can they get a discount if they're not paying the utility bill or if they're not, uh, uh, the customer of record? No. The customer of record pays the bill, they would be the ones to apply for that. But I don't, I don't think you can do it at that scale, it has to be done on an individual basis.
Okay. So can we, like, you have these programs here with the van and everything, can we set up a town hall workshop for Edison coming in to help these seniors at their location to help them fill out this paperwork so they're not getting to run around through their management? So they could try to get battery packs, they could try to get baseline service for their CPAPs, you know, some kind of, you know, batteries for their, their bed, their hospital beds that, once they push the bed up, now they're stuck, you know? Something for them, and they don't have to search everywhere or wait on the phone, but we could establish a place at the senior center with staff from Edison to help them expedite the forms?
The answer is, if we can do that, I'll make it happen. If we can't, I'll let you know. Um, we were going to hold, because there were outages back in November, Conrad and I were working on doing what we call an outage school, where we bring our outage team out to basically walk you through the, the basics of outages, how they work, how they operate, includes PSPS, but also all the other outages as well. And we were gonna do it at the senior center. Uh, the holidays got in the way, uh, but we were obviously going to come back to that to address specifically the outages that took place in November. I imagine when we do this workshop, it's gonna be very popular. I imagine a lot of you will be there. Um, we will address, um, we will definitely work to set up shop at the senior center to answer their questions.
So yes, I'll follow up on the food loss, I'm gonna follow up on the re-grid, and I'm gonna follow up on the, you know, request for that. So my last statement, and can you verify this, because now I'm getting told that the city here is making sure that Edison doesn't turn the power back on.
Can you say that again?
And they said that the city's making sure Edison can't turn the power back on, and the mayor's got the switch at his house.
Oh, okay.
So can you verify that we don't have any call for that?
Uh, we took the switch from your mayor's house last week, so he doesn't have access to it. No, um, obviously, your mayor has nothing to do with the power grid. You know, the good news, and that's why people like me have a job, so that when things You know, the good news, and that's why people like me have a job, so that when things are going south for you, you can reach out to your mayor, or any of your city council members, or Conrad, or any of your wonderful staff here, and they have a direct line to me. And I always respond as quickly as I can to them. So that is one way to get ahold of me, to solve some problems in this town, okay?
Okay, so the city can't hold the power off?
You cannot, no.
Okay. All right, and then my last question is for our city manager, Conrad. Conrad, with all this work and upgrades being done by residents and the extra expenditure, is there any way we could have a discount program for electrical work on the houses for our permits?
It's something we can explore. So, obviously, council, council sets rates, but we can bring back something that, and I'm off the top of my head, so making this up, for installation of generators and the wiring that's involved to put the, the trans, the transition switches in. We can either waive the permit fees, or reduce those permit fees, or something, something like that. We'll define something and bring it forward.
Okay, it'd be great if my other council agrees with something doing like that, because I know we take care of people, like, when their homes catch on fire and stuff, and you do a good job, and we expedite the permits, and we waive a lot, so that'd be something we could explore.
We'll come up with a program that, and I don't foresee council putting a roadblock in it.
All right, thank you. So, you heard from the council, and I appreciate, so now we're gonna have public comment, and like I said to the public, this isn't a question and answer thing, this will write it down, and at the end, Mark, if you don't mind, we'll answer some of these questions if we could.
Sure.
But also, I would like to have, like, Daisy could put our, our website, Mark's information, point of contact information, so they could get ahold of you by email?
Email is preferred, I would love for my cell phone number not to go out there, because...
Yeah, no, your cellphone won't go out there, unless you take that switch out of my house.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it back in. I recently became Googleable, and I get all kinds of calls from all over the place, and, and it would, I won't be able to get to you if I, if that happens, so.
Yes, just emails only, and you could copy it to the, the council too, so we could hold Mark accountable, and also the city manager, you know, but you could CC us also. So, with that being said, Debbie, who do we have?
One other, since you're bringing that, we also have the Edison contact information on our website, as well as a link to the claim form, so you can find that there as well.
Yeah, and I should say this too, our outage map has been a problem during this event, because the, the event has been so unruly, right? It's been so hard to kind of figure out when the wind is coming back. I mean, we have our weather stations telling us, and they've been accurate, but we're still dealing with weather, and so, we're having a harder time with this event. This, the wide-scale nature of this event is giving us a harder time pinpointing when your power will be back on, on our map. I don't know if any of you know this, we have an outage map, it typically works great, we provide you with as much information as we can. With this event, it was overwhelmed, and we had so much traffic that even though the website was slowing down, the map became inundated, and the changes were happening so rapidly, we couldn't get out accurate restoration times. And so, for that, I'm also sorry, but in the future, and even now, I would recommend you go to that section of our website, because it does contain not just the map itself, but also, which tells you where you are in terms of high fire risk areas, if you're being considered for our period of concern, in other words, the weather is bad, if your circuit is being considered for a de-energization, or if it's already been shut down, that's all evident on the map. So if you go to our outage notification center, that's there, but so is links, so are links to other resources for us, but also for, you know, organizations like 2-1-1, and the cities that have warming centers set up. So I'd encourage you to keep checking that website out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And, okay, public, remember, this is three minutes you get by law. If you could wrap it up sooner, that'd be great, but please do not go past the three minutes. If you act unruly on the podium, unfortunately, we'll have to escort you out of here. If the audience acts unruly, we'll have to escort you out. I don't want to do that, this is your government, this is your voice, just be respectful and be adults, all right? We're all in the same boat, I don't have power, so I feel your pain, you know, spending extra money on propane and gasoline, and helping take care of my in-laws, so this has been a burden on me too, all right? And I don't make the same amount as Karen Bass, so mine's six, $6.08, so this is a burden on everybody, and we are all upset, very upset, okay? And, and I, and I know the anxiety and the stress, 'cause every time the wind blows now, it's just, it's crazy. We shouldn't be like that, all right? So Daisy, who's our first public comment?
This public comment came via email today regarding the special presentation. It states, "Thank you for being here this evening to address this important issue. This has been a very distressing time in our community, except for around 18 hours when power was restored several days ago. The PSPs lasted, lasted over a week. Is this our new normal? What changed to bring us to this point? Who are the players orchestrating these outage events, and what is the protocol leading to a decision to shut off our power? It's not only been stressful, also confusing. SCE alerts and warnings are regularly out of sync with what is actually happening, or has already happened. In addition, notifications that aren't accurate have been sent out. For example, a few days ago, many of us received a notice that crews were on their way to begin restoration processes with our addresses listed. Even though we know up to eight hours may pass before power turns on, it really got our hopes up, it became clear after 24 hours that it was false information. This is very taxing on our household budgets. Expenses may include lost wages, food spoiling, meals out, hotel rooms, generators, to cost to install them, and to purchase gas or propane to power them, just to name a few. This has also had a significant negative impact on our physical and mental health, and the idea that this will be ongoing hardship is hard to accept. Please tell us there is a solution to resolve this, so that we may once again enjoy a secure, peaceful life in our community." And that came from Kelly and Daryl Burrell. And from the audience, we have Teri Ellison.
Well, what I heard is, and I, I'm not knowledgeable about anything, but the, the power grid thing that's coming over from there, now, on Newport, is a huge Edison, I don't know what it's called, and you're saying that that, if that all happens, it's gonna put a lot of people out, and on and on. Well, to me, it seems like Grand Terrace is very, very important, and we should have the state of the, our, you know, the best technology here in Grand Terrace, if we're so important. So it doesn't make sense to me, I would like to understand why we don't have the best if we're so important. And then, my mother was very sick the other night, and I had to go to Walgreens, and I go there on Tuesday night, and they're shut down, because they have no power. So I had to go to Redlands, and they honored the prescription, and I went in, and so I came back through town, it was about 7:00, and it was so black, because the whole town was out, and I was thinking the same thing that the mayor said, is why don't we have at least one solar panel light in each intersection, so that we can only see? I was scared to death somebody was gonna hit me. I mean, it was very scary out there, and that just seems like a simple solution. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Suzanne Santoya.
My name is Suzanne Santoya. I have been a resident for 45 years. I live on the red flag zone. This is the third time that my power has been out. We're on the fourth day today with no power. I've lost all my food twice already. I'm not asking anybody to replace it either, but what I am asking is for our power to be turned on. It's this ridiculous going on, and it's gonna continue, so we really need to work together as a city to get this taken care of. We are all frustrated, we're angry, and I fully understand the seriousness that could happen if we have a fire. My son-in-law is a resident of Grand Terrace, he is a Redlands fireman, he has been out in the eastern fire since it started, he's still over there. We pray for our firemen and our police officers, that they are kept safe. If this is gonna be an ongoing situation, then we really need to stick as a community and work with each other to figure something out. I feel that many of our families with children need some kind of food vouchers, it would be helpful for them. The children don't understand. Edison should provide food vouchers. I understand there are vouchers for generators, although it's hard to get a generator. I'd also like to talk to the city about the overgrown vegetation. With the strong winds, and it was really strong, my daughter's tree, her neighbor's tree fell on her house, and there was a squabble about who, what's the neighbor's tall tree, pine tree, fell right on her house and damaged it. Luckily, nobody was hurt. But not only, well, the neighbor stepped up and cut the tree down, took some other trees out, but there's one tall tree standing there, and it can't be brought down, because the lady said it belongs to the city. So I would like to have the city go out and investigate all the tall trees that belong on city property, and have them trimmed. Can we at least get maybe some kind of tree servers, service that can help?
Your time's up, but we'll get, get with Conrad, and get your address, so we could go look at that tree, and we do have a tree service going, but you could request on our email too, 'cause, you know, we have certain trees that we take down, but please get with the city manager, and then CC me too, so we can follow up on it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, Daisy, next.
Mr. Paul, gentlemen and ladies, two minutes and 22 seconds.
Okay, I'm gonna hold every second on that.
Okay, my name is Arthur Nyberg, and I'm here to address the electrical outage here in Grand Terrace. As I am a four-year resident, this constant, these constant problems have caused us to live in the dark, cold, and here are just some of the examples. And this is at the, the residence at 22627 Grand Terrace Road. Well, let's see. We have no interior or exterior or emergency lighting of any kind, no hot water, no showers, no phone service, no home phone service, no internet access, no refrigeration, or no, no, yeah, no, no refrigerators, no dishwashers, no stove, no washer-dryers, no hallway lights, no smoke detectors, no fire alarm, or sprinklers, no heat in the complex, no one in office staff to provide support, as they work at other, other places for wind, because they can't work there. Many of us use medical equipment, requiring 110 volts AC and internet connections. All of our elderly need, let's see, all of our elderly need viable living conditions. Other apartments, complexes brought in commercial generators, ours, of course, hasn't. Let's see, let's see, oh, can't take a bath, so we're dirty all the time. Night temperatures in the 50s, in the 50 zone, darkness in the corridors, perhaps, and I don't need to go any further, if you don't get enough from that, then you weren't listening in the first place.
Well, we're listening.
All right, you guys catching this?
Yeah, and we're...
We're fed the hell up.
Okay, sir, we're gonna have to sit down, but we already have the city manager working on all those. And I'm gonna ask the audience, please, refrain from clapping, because clapping's the same as booing, all right?
Margie Miller.
Margie Miller, and I'm the publisher of the Grand Terrace City News, and Mark, I think you're pretty amazing to come in here and share with us all of this information. Learning that we are kind of a hub of, of all this electrical equipment is devastating to us personally, because we are without so much comfort. Some people were very smart, and they got solar and Tesla batteries, other people got generators, and Brian, tell me the interface thing that you push the circuits, help me. That makes it easy to use your generator, and then you push the circuit, and use what you want to use, okay? And so, and then others, you know, I started out with a solar battery from the Patriot, that lasted a day, then I'm going over to my dear, my dear friend, and charging in, charging in his store. Now, the people that are keeping us open and working is the gun shop and the tattoo parlor. Jason, thank you so much. One of the things that occurred to me, Mark, would be having a customer service person come to each home and see what they need. If they have the Tesla than they don't need, maybe they do, maybe they don't, but there are many people that don't have anything. So, customer service comes in, gives a budget to each family, each home, and says, okay, what do you need? And then you give us what we need to get through the next time that we don't have electricity. And there's going to be many times that we're not gonna have electricity. But if Grand Terrace could be taken care of, one family at a time, with Edison's help, because Edison is what we need, I don't know about you, but I still, every time, walk and flip the switch, today, still today, and knowing it's not going to turn on. If you could do something like that, Mark, it would be wonderful. And thank you again for coming here tonight, that's all.
Thank you.
Next one is Herman Hilke.
Mr. Hilke, you're next.
I'm looking, Larry Halsted, yeah. I'm storing this truck for him, anyone buy Hillary's truck? So, I wanted everybody to feel at home. Herman Hilke, planning commission two years, city council mayor 16 years, I was one of five parents 30 years ago who started an effort to get a high school in Grand Terrace. Doug Wilson helped us, Matt Brown really helped us, that was something. There's part of this I don't understand. Thursday, Tuesday, we had no lights, Wednesday, we had lights, full city. Thursday, it came back on, and off, came back on, but why can't, if they did it Wednesday, why can't they do it now? Think about it. Of all the BS this guy brought with him, well, by the way, Mark, your tree trimmers, you got robbed. They came to my neighborhood, they sat in the truck for four or five hours, they went home. So the private company tree trimmers took you guys for a ride. All those years, we were told Edison's... All those years, we were told Edison's a good neighbor. We're important to Edison because all that equipment's up there. But now I'm thinking, I'm connecting what he said, that that's where the risk is. Everybody in here, your insurance rates have gone through the ceiling. Is that connected? A long time ago, what was her name? Patrizia Madarazzi. Maserati. She worked with the fire department. And when I was working, well, by the way, Tuesday, I came in on some of the issue. Came in the front office, the city council was, I mean, the city hall was dark. Conrad was downstairs by the counter. It was like Command Central. He had two-way radio, he had a cellphone. The staff was going around doing their work. He had a box of donuts over there for them. It was really good. You have, I have a lot of confidence in you because that was working really well. I wanted to start with that, but I should have started with that. It doesn't make sense that if they switched all the lights on Wednesday, he's saying they can't do it now. Why? Why? Something's wrong in here. And if we're such an important part, a good neighbor for Edison, why doesn't 92313? By the way, that's my zip code. I got that for us. One of the first things I did. 92313, why don't we get a very special rate? We should have a special rate. If you're hurting this community because you're power, if you're hurting this community because of our insurance rates, because your calculations and Patrizia's calculations with the fire department 25 years ago, shouldn't 92313 get a special rate from Edison? Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mark. Daisy, who's next?
Bobby Forbes.
It's Forbes.
Thank you, Herman. I would also like to remind the community about the Azure Hills community. Over here on Palm, they are all electric. I see residents of that community here. So they do own their units or rent the units. However, if you know anyone in there, they're not very well off either. So they have no gas on their property. So please keep them in mind if there's something you can do for them. I thank Edison for coming tonight. I do think you gave us some information that was helpful. I know the community is upset. I had no power for three days. I live by myself, it was easy. I had a headlamp, I had a thing like Herman had here, and I did okay. But my niece sure didn't because it was cold. And I think that our staff, Conrad, council, are doing a great job as far as handling what they are able to handle. I know they can't control Edison. I'm not scripted, I never am. I just want the community to know that we have to look out for each other. There are people in this audience tonight trying to do collections for the seniors at the senior center. Shad has stepped up and put lights in there. As a reminder, not all smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors are electric. You can buy battery-operated ones if you don't already have them. Check your batteries. It's gonna be bad enough for the people trying to file claims for the roofs blowing off. Mark Joelstead had his roof blow off last week. A year-old roof, that's how strong the winds are. There's things going on in town that are not normal. We're gonna see it again and again and again. We don't want everybody to leave town. We want people to stay here and be able to live a comfortable life. But the most important thing, I think, is to help each other. As hard as it is, you might not think about your neighbor across the street being 90 years old. The woman that was standing next to me a little while ago is helping her neighbor who is 99 years old and no power. She owns a nice house in the neighborhood. Nobody's thinking about her. We're all thinking about ourselves, but please, think about your neighbors, the lady down the street. It's hard to not take a shower, not have enough food. I'm here to help whoever I can help, but I think that the rest of the community needs to help each other. And I've forgotten what else I was gonna say, but I'm glad to be here and I'm really grateful so many people came tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Daisy, who's next?
James E.
Hi, everyone. Longtime listener, first-time caller. I'm your typical blue-collar worker. This unprecedented event shows out how out of touch Edison is with their customers. I understand an abundance of caution, but when you simply don't offer full compensation, it's very ridiculous. Groceries, you said to submit a claim, I already did. We got denied because we're not on CalFresh. You guys don't reimburse $400 worth of meat in my freezer in the garage, gone. All our perishables. My father is on a low-sodium diet. I came here yesterday, was asked to leave from city hall, but I heard someone say, gee, this man should leave. They offered fried chicken and potato salad for my father-in-law, who's on a low-sodium diet. That's, it's ridiculous. Groceries require documentation. I'm not, I've been around since balancing checkbooks. I don't keep my grocery receipts. So the abundance of documentation is simply ridiculous. Hotels, you're offering 8% discount on hotels, still coming out to about $115, $120 a day. This has been seven days. I'm not taking a vacation down the street. I'm trying to save money here. $250 rebate for your generators that we can't buy on your site. Only the $650 is if you're already on the program, that's what it says. Recent reports from Statista shows SCE recorded a net income of approximately $1.6 billion US dollars in the fiscal year 2023. That's up from $954 million the prior year. SCE is a subsidiary of Edison International, which reported the overall profit. Stephen D. Powell, the CEO of Southern California Edison, made $3,184,517 in total compensation. SCE is the largest investor-owned electric utilities in the US. Stephen D. Powell's compensation includes salary of $707,500, bonuses of $594,683, stock options of $464,761, stock, other stocks of $1,394,348, other compensation totaling $23,225. All Google. SCE is working with Topanga to do the underground lines, but I hear that we're more important. We have all the information here. All the relay stations, which one of my companies builds for Edison, they have hardened lines working with the Topanga City Council in Santa Monica Mountains. This includes installing your covered conduits, your conductors, fire resistant power poles. You're doing it over there. We are a high-risk here with all the high-risk infrastructure here. Why not do it here? Why not? You are, this is over $1.6 billion US dollars.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Daisy?
Tori Gates.
Hi, and thank you for holding this meeting. I have a fear of public speaking, so this is something I'm very passionate about. First and foremost, thank you all to our city officials and all the individuals that have stepped up and are helping in this time, and especially to our population that is in need, but like our seniors. But unfortunately, we have a lot of seniors that are not just at the senior center. I too live at Azure Hills Village. We have a lot of seniors that are not doing okay over there. It's very cold in our houses, everything is electric. Just the other day, me and my 10-year-old son had to lift a 100-pound generator out of our neighbor's car. She can't, she doesn't know how to do it, she can't lift it up. I don't know what I'm doing. She's not doing okay. She lives alone and she has no idea how to work the generator on top of all the other neighbors who have needed help and who are on limited, who are on limited income. The people of Grand Terrace who have had their power out longer than a week need help. I understand we can barely scratch the surface of what has happened in LA, but we are suffering here as well. Our children at Terrace View were out of power for about four days. They had to use the restroom in dark and do their work in dark, cold classrooms. So to our officials, I ask you that you press for help from our county, state, and even the federal. People are dipping into their savings to buy fuel and generators. We've had to throw away food and lose income from our jobs. And to Edison, I ask you, what can be done when this happens again next week? Because we know that this is now the new norm. I heard you say that turning the power on when there is no wind present is a waste of your resources. But I mean, hey, screw your consumers, who Edison doesn't have to reimburse for everything they lost.
Thank you.
Johann Gallo.
Well, good evening. Something different to talk about for a change. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Hussey, Councilmember Sabino, and Brown. I've been on the phone with you guys daily about everything that's going on. I'll cut to the chase. First of all, if we are a priority, then why to Councilmember Brown, we made a priority to put this coating on the power lines that will eliminate this risk for Grand Terrace. Powering the phone systems, Councilmember Sabino, myself, mayor. You know, it's an amazing thing. Most people don't realize if you lose the internet and you're on voice-over internet protocol, you lost your phone. Used to be you lost your power, you still had a phone. Now you don't. Thanks to their help, you have generators now stationed at many of the phone boxes to get the lines up. That should be on Edison. Edison should be working with our phone companies that if we're gonna be on voice-over internet protocol and we have seniors that don't have a cell, they need to be able to have a phone. And they gotta figure that out. Let's talk about generators. Councilmember Brown and I, a really good subject right now. Two weeks I worked on this. I reached out to Councilmember Sabino and I said, this is really amazing because most people have no idea that in 2022, this lovely governor and CARB pushed for Assembly Bill 1346. Well, you know, it's just small gas engines, lawn mowers, leaf blowers, all the things that irritate people. But in that bill was generators. So for two weeks, we struggled to order a generator through Southern California Edison, only to be denied. I went through every retailer that is out there that sells a generator to place an order. The minute it is in the cart, it was denied, cannot be shipped to California. As of today, that still exists. Now granted, California Air Resources board lessened the risk and allowed us to order them. Praise CARB. My God, those people are idiots. The impact on our community is far-reaching, and we haven't even begun to understand that. It's impacting our insurance. It's impacting our value of our properties and whether or not you even want to buy a house on this ridge up here that many of us live. So explain that to us because none of it makes sense. I've lived here 42 years. Why, when Cal Fire changed the zoning, did we all of a sudden lose our electricity? Thank you.
Thank you, Johann.
Hugo Hermio.
How are you guys? You heard from everybody. One thing I have, not against you guys, but you guys are the face of the community. I'm a new citizen to the city. I love the city so far. You guys need to resolve this issue. You can't let this corporation run your city, tell you when you can have power, when you can't have power, okay? We don't, we need them, of course, but you can't let them run your city, okay? All throughout the night, I don't know where you guys stand, okay? I don't know where you guys are at, okay? I know Councilmember Allen, you don't know me, but I know you. But you guys can't let these guys run your corporations, your city. You can't let them do that. You guys gotta get, you guys are the face of the community. You are what they see. We need you guys to stand up for us, okay? You can't let them run your city, okay? You guys need to find a way around their SCE policy, whatever they have. For the last year I've lived in the city, there's only two risks that I see for starting fires. Is the Barton Hills. I've been here for a year, like I said. You guys have not taken care of that brush. If you guys depend on them to take care of that brush, it will never get done. You guys need to figure out a way to get that brush under control. The other one is the 215 going up the hill. That's a whole bunch of brush. You guys need to, you guys have the power to negotiate with other cities, Caltrans, to get that brush cleared. That way, they don't have an excuse to tell you when you guys can't have power, okay? Like I said, my daughter is in elementary school, no power for four days. She went to the bathroom in the darkness, she said. That is unacceptable. You guys, I don't know how you, I should know how you run your city, but you guys have other cities contributing to your city, La Malinda, Colton, okay? You guys don't, sorry, I am very angry, okay? I'm sorry, okay? But yeah, that's, you can't let them run your city. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Suzanne Bia.
Good afternoon, or good evening, sorry. So of course, a lot has already been said. I bring a little bit of different insight because I work for a CPUC utility that provides the same territory as Edison does. So when I tell you there is money, council people and residents, there is money, okay? Edison has it. I work in the call center, I've been there for 19 years. I know I'm short, but I am in my 30s. So when I tell you that there's called, there's something called a grant money-only allowance, that me, as a lead in the call center, I can grant people money, and I'm not in the same position that Mr. Cloud is in. As a lead, I can do that. I'm sure Edison can do that. We're in a special position in the city, okay? Or in the hub in their area. We deserve food vouchers. We deserve generators. Their investors need to decide one of two things. Whether they're gonna provide us as residents generators, such as Kohler's or Generax, so we can have an alternative source of fuel when winds pick up. I get that the utility doesn't control the weather. I understand that. However, when my utility that I work for causes an inconvenience, our utility provides food vouchers. Our utility puts up residence. We don't have to do that mandated by the CPUC, but we do it to keep our customers happy. They can do it. Someone already quoted how much money they make. There is money in the utility. I promise you, there is money. However, their whole interest is to make their investors money. They're gonna have to put it to a table. You know, put the grounds, put the lines underground or allow us a way that we can live in the city that we pay taxes to while, you know, the winds pick up or whatnot because everything has gone bad in the refrigerators for everybody. That's why we're all here. We all need service. I'm, we're in the process of getting a natural gas generator in our home as well because I cannot help, I, this whole week, have not been able to assist customers in an emergency situation because I don't have power at home. So the utility that I work for has gone to basically work without me. I have not been able to there to help customers. They can do it. Edison can do it. Again, the call center, the whole like, oh, put your receipts through, they won't do it because that's the bureaucratic way of denying. The utilities will deny if they can. We need Edison to treat Grand Terrace as a special city that it is. We have different circumstances. We understand that, hey, they can't cover all of SoCal's food vouchers or refrigerator. I get it, but we're different, we have different circumstances. For the Palisades, they're forgiving bills. They can forgive bills here. For Los Angeles, they're giving food vouchers. They can get food vouchers here. We need them to treat us just like they're treating them because they're inconveniencing us. But you better believe they're sending bills. You better believe that if you get late on your bill, they'll offer you an extension, but they won't forgive it. So we need them to treat us like they're treating them over there because they're putting us through this. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
Daniel Torres.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mark. And of course, good evening, Grand Terrace. First off, I want to say that, you know, after hearing everyone, I'm just as frustrated as First off, I want to say that after hearing everyone, I'm just as frustrated as everyone in this room. So I'm not going to waste my time saying all the things that I've been through, as well as my family, sitting in the dark currently in our house. But I will say that me living here my, most of my entire life, this is the first time that I've seen my city actually get together, organize and actually mobilize a response to this inconvenience. So I do commend the city for doing that. Thank you. Also, Mark, thank you for coming out here. You definitely came into the lion's den. So thank you for hearing us out and also being here and explaining the situation in a broader context. But I'm also here to say, you know, what can we do as a city, as a government, as industries to better prepare ourselves for this? And quite frankly, yes, we need better access to generators. We need like more, just more of a response and more available, resources, yes, thank you. But also, I'm thinking, you know, is it outside the realm of possibility for Edison, for Southern California Edison to possibly even look into cooperating with other industries or other companies in and around the same industries, industry, such as working with solar companies and making solar more affordable or more accessible to these areas that are impacted? And possibly have either a program that can have solar panels as well as backup batteries with these high-risk areas for PSPS? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robert Seaver.
Okay. First off, thanks for coming. Most of my stuff's towards you. The batteries that you can get for breathing aid and all that stuff, they don't last for a week. They might last for a day. Second, generators shouldn't be the new normal. Okay? We shouldn't have to worry about getting generators. Third, we shouldn't be afraid of a breeze. Fourth, from what I've looked around, like my neighborhood, the only above brown power lines, the distribution line comes up the street and across and then goes up over the mountain. I know the mountain has high wind, but can we put a switch that shuts it off after the city and before the mountain so we don't get turned off, but the high wind area does? Could you look into that? That's my only request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kristy Bowle.
I'm Kristy Bowle. I'm a resident here. Thank you, everybody. I'm a passionate person. If you know me, you know that I'm a passionate person. I'm going to try to keep this together. Thank you for being here because you, you came into a firing squad and we've actually been pretty nice and I'm proud of my fellow neighbors. I want to speak over here because this is where my passion and all these people here, the seniors that live over at the, I keep calling it the Senior Center. It's not the Senior Center. This is where I'm going to have to keep myself together because my passion, right now, you guys are not feeling seen or heard, and I want to tell you that I see you and I hear you and your community. You may feel forgotten by Edison and you may be forgotten by the peoples that are, people that are there serving food and they're doing that, and that's wonderful. Last night.
Kristy, can you please, Kristy? Please look at, look at the podium.
I'm sorry. Okay. So when I first heard about a situation, and this has been going on since last Tuesday, that they lost power, wherein we all lost power, a lot of us did. So I was made aware of this situation because someone was bedridden and they were in an upright position and they, the power went out and they couldn't, their bed wouldn't be able to be put down. So I was contacted, or I saw it on Facebook. I reached out to my husband because he was going to go work the CERT team, which is a 24-hour thing. And I said, I was on my way to work and I said, "Babe, can you get over there because there's a man over there that needs your, go figure it out. Put his bed down." So he did that. The guy was already okay. At that point, I found out the exact situation. The gentleman that spoke a while ago, unless this audience here has walked through those dark halls, which I know now, Mr. Hussey, you have, unless you've walked through those dark halls, you have tried to get ahold of management, you have seen that they don't have running, they don't have hot water, they don't have, you're, I was standing in front of one of the residents last night and I could not see her and she was two feet in front of me waving her hands and I could not see her. This is an urgent, urgent situation. I would beg of you to please go and meet with them and I would be happy to sit down with these residences with you to please. They don't have their CPAT machines. They don't have their heart monitors. They are in dire shape for seven days. They don't have caregivers on a regular basis because oftentimes, let's be real, people, your family members have dropped you off and left you to fend for yourself and they're not checking on you. I will say, I see you and I have a big amount of donations for you at my house that I will be bringing to you and I will be feeding you oatmeal.
Three minutes are up. Thank you.
Last one is Mike T.
Hi, I apologize. I just got here from work, so I'm not sure what all went on so far. I do see people looking to the left. I'm assuming our Edison person is over here. As a resident of Grand Terrace, my big complaint is that the power is off and there's no wind. For a week now, there's been one day that I can recall had really strong winds. The rest did not, and several days have had virtually no winds. And I can, I can handle a day or so without power, without much inconvenience. But my question to Edison is, has anybody considered something like installing a grid of wind meter, you know, wind speed meters around Southern California? And then when that meter trips and shows it's exceeded, you know, 50 miles an hour or whatever your set limit is, turn that section off and waiting until the wind is actually qualifying you to turn a section off rather than just going by the National, you know, Weather Services red flag warnings and blanketing everybody with power offs? That way, we wouldn't be turned off if it's windy in Fontana or some other place. Is that something they've thought about or do?
Sir, they can't comment back for you. This is just a public comment.
Okay.
But they have been, they talked about it earlier.
Yeah, that just, all I'm saying is my gripe is when my power is off and it's not windy.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more public comment.
Daisy, we cut off Reverend Ida from the first part. She didn't do her public comment.
Her comment wasn't regarding SCE, but you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, we cut her off.
Okay. Reverend Ida?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do appreciate that you've been so kind and we know this isn't easy for you at all. We need your help. We're in this senior complex, Blue Mountain Senior Citizen. Each of us starts from 65 on up to 90 years old. I'm 79. We're having people from the street come in. I was attacked last night and day before. We have no lights, no hot water, no running water halfway. We need your help. We know you will help. We tried to contact management. They refuse. They won't answer us. They won't give us the proper number. All I can say is God is with us right now. He's standing by us and He sent an angel like you. I know you're doing all you can and we appreciate it. And Conrad, thank your people because they are on time and they're feeding the seniors. But we have seniors that's halfway dead and cannot get up. They can't even walk in the dark. They can't even see. Please help us, Mayor. And I know you will because I know you are a man of God, just like I'm a woman of God. I've been preaching since the age of 32 and I'm an ex-cop from Burbank, California. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Daisy, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, Mark, would you like to make any closing statements, please? And some of these questions might have popped in your mind that you could help us out with. My particular one is that grant-only allowance.
Can you say that again, please?
The grant-only allowance?
Okay. I haven't heard of it, so I will check in on that and I'll make sure that that, if that's something we can offer, then we will. I'll look into it for you guys. I'm going to watch the meeting back and take every comment you guys have taken or given, every question, and I'll make sure that everything that you've said tonight gets elevated in the company. Okay? I promise you.
All right, sir. And we're still meeting tomorrow?
What are we meeting for?
Well, I'm going to kidnap you and we're going to drive around Grand Terrace.
Oh, okay. I'm available for you, Mayor. Yeah.
Nine o'clock, Donut House?
Oh, that's right. Yes, yes. I will be there.
And I'd like to have you take a drive with me over there to the senior place.
Let's do it.
Okay, well, thank you for coming out and I'll see you tomorrow. Okay. Thank you, everybody. We're going to take a five-minute recess and we'll be back here at 10 after 9. Thank you for coming out tonight. God bless. All right. What do we got next on here? Consent calendar. The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They be acted upon the City Council at any one time without discussion. Any Councilmember, staff member or citizen may request removal of any items on a consent counter. Is there any public comment for the consent counter?
No, sir.
Okay, before we take a, before the vote, the City Attorney will read the title only. Ordinance submitting Title 12 of the City Council, City of Grand Terrace. Excuse me, gentlemen? Gentlemen? We want to conduct business here, so can you take out in the hall or sit down? Thank you. So amending Title 12 of the City of Grand Terrace Municipal Code by repealing or replacing Chapter 12.28 in its entirety, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for item number five on the agenda, the title of the ordinance is as follows. For purposes of the motion and second, it is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace repealing and replacing Chapter 12.28, Street and Parkway Trees of Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Regulating Street and Parkway Tree Maintenance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And before we get going on, on two, the consent counters on two and three, I have to recuse myself on two checks. Check number 81895 for October's register and check number 81985 for November. Does that, did I do it right? Okay, this is new. So, oh, and then, okay. Oh, wait, the rest of you make money? Okay. Michelle, go ahead.
For check number 81905, I will be recusing myself for the October check register for reimbursement of $50 for campaign signed permit fees paid to me.
Okay, any other? Councilmember Allen?
So I'll be recusing myself from check number 81870 from the October check register, which is a reimbursement to me of campaign signed permit fee. And I think it was $100.
Okay. Councilmember Brown?
I'm going to recuse myself from approval of check number 81875 from the October check register for reimbursement of campaign signed permit fees.
Mayor Pro Tem?
And I will recuse myself for the October check register, check number 81916 for reimbursement of health insurance.
Well, good thing our checks aren't the only thing on this because none of us can vote, right? No. Okay, so do I have a motion for item one through three, five, six, seven and eight?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilwoman Sabino. Please vote.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Public hearing, non-unfinished business, non-new business, selected by Mayor Pro Tem, presented by Daisy.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of Council. Daisy Alcoser, City Clerk. The staff report before you is the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem. The staff report supports all adopted goals of the City Council's 2030 vision and all adopted core values. A little background, following the regular municipal election date held every two years, the City Council selects one of its own members to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. It is therefore appropriate at this time for the City Council to now select a Mayor Pro Tem following the regular municipal election conducted in November 2024. If you have any questions, I'm available.
So how do we select? We thumb wrestle?
You can. It would be a nomination, which is the motion followed by a second.
Okay, Council, do I have any nominations for Mayor Pro Tem?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Michelle Sabino.
Do I have a second? I'll second Councilmember Sabino. Any comments?
No public comment.
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes. Mayor Pro Tem Wilson did vote no.
All right. Well, congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Sabino. All right, so the next one's going to be Mayor Appointed Boards and Commissions. So Omni Trans Board Member, which is myself, and the alternate was Councilmember Wilson. I'm going to stay as the board member. Do I have anybody who wants to be an alternate? For Omni Trans? Okay, you want to be the alternate?
I can serve as alternate for that one.
All right. All right, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. Councilmember Wilson's the director. I'm going to remove my name from the alternate. Councilmember Wilson, do you still want to do the JPIA? Yes? No? All right, do I have anybody who wants to be on the JPIA?
I'd like to do that. I've been pretty involved with JPIA over the years and so I've been to quite a few of their events and their training sessions, so I think I've got a pretty good handle on JPIA.
All right. Does anybody else want? So Councilmember Allen, JPIA Director, does anybody want to be the alternate? So Councilman Allen, JPIA Director, does anybody want to be the alternate? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and put Matt Brown as alternate.
I was going to nominate you.
You're going to nominate who?
You.
I'm trying to spread the wealth here. League of Cities, that's, we don't pick those until the voting delegate will get close. But I know Mayor Pro Tem Sabino was the alternate, so when we do go ahead and do it, I'd like to see her as a voting delegate. Does anybody want to be the alternate?
I'm okay with serving as alternate again.
You want to be alternate again?
I would be happy to serve as the delegate.
Colton Joint Unified School District?
You know, Mayor, I'm really involved in the community cabinet program there and I have been. I'm in projects there and I'm working well with the other members of the school district and the board of the school board. I'd like to keep that position.
All right, does anybody want to be the alternate?
I'd like to nominate Matt Brown, who actually has a child attending school in the area.
Did you want to nominate him for the cabinet or the alternate?
I'd like to nominate him for cabinet.
I'll second that. I know you've been on it, Mr. Allen, but we'll keep you as an alternate so you can still go since you became a director of the JPIA. All right, Southern California Associate Government, we had Councilmember Wilson and me as alternate, the SCAG. Would anybody like to be a voting delegate on SCAG?
I would nominate Councilmember Wilson as the voting delegate and you, Mr. Mayor, as the alternate.
All right, well, he's not here. But we'll keep him on that. SBCTA, I'll stay as the board member. Would anybody like to be the alternate? It's usually the Mayor Pro Tem, so I'm going to put Michelle Sabino on it. Or did you want to do it, Matt? You haven't been an alternate on one of these high ones. Did you want to do the SBCTA alternate?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Mayor Pro Tem, is that all right with you? Oh, San Bernardino Waste. Matt, do you have a? Yeah, you do. So Councilman Allen, do you still want to do it?
I think that'd be a good program for other members of this body to get involved in and learn about the Solid Waste Task Force.
Yes, I agree.
I'll be the alternate.
All right.
But I'll nominate either one of the two that decided to stay, Matt Brown.
We'll put Matt at waste?
Yeah.
Sorry, Matt. It's not a waste, though. And then San Bernardino Homeless, I know, Councilman Allen, you're on some of the subcommittees, right?
I'm on the Regional Steering Committee.
Yeah, so we'll keep you on there. I don't want to take you off your committee. And would anybody like to be the alternate on that?
I would like to serve as alternate to Councilmember Allen on that committee.
Yeah, because he's, he worked his way up to committee. I don't want to take that away. All right, you got it, Daisy?
Yeah, I got it, thank you.
All right. Okay, so congratulations. All right, grand, all right, so we'll close number ten. Is there any public comment on ten?
No, sir.
All right. The Grand Terrace Living Word Church Foundation.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So G eleven is a community benefit fund grant from the Grand Terrace Living World Four-Squared Church, and they have applied for fifteen hundred dollars. And with us tonight is Pastor Jason Alvera to speak on behalf of the organization.
Good evening, members of the city council. I want to just begin by thanking you once again for the opportunity to address you today. Here tonight on behalf of my church, Living Word in an Empire, to share with you about our recent community outreach entitled Walk Through How that was held on October thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. This event was not just a simple gathering. It was a heartfelt initiative aimed at confronting some of the most pressing issues facing our community today, like suicide, substance abuse, alcoholism, and mental health challenges. In a world that can often feel overwhelming, we sought to create a safe haven for individuals and families, a place where they could come together, share their struggles, and experience the transformative love of God. Our event provided the essential resources like literature and guidance on these critical topics. We also gave out candy and refreshments to over five hundred people free of charge. We were so grateful to witness the warmth and connection among the hundreds of participants that attended this event. Just last month, we also held the Christmas outreach event that brought joy to countless families in our local community. We went to our neighboring communities and distributed hundreds of toys to those who might otherwise have faced a bleak holiday season. This was not merely an act of giving. It was a commitment to fostering hope and reminding families that they are not alone. At Living Word in an Empire, our mission is clear, to reach out to the community, to connect with individuals, excuse me, and most importantly, instill hope. Our vision is to continue hosting events that would serve the community, and we are dedicated to offering these events free of charge. Our goal is simply this, we want to love and support people, the people of Grand Terrace. However, we recognize that organizing these events requires significant time, effort, resources, volunteers, and importantly, finances. This is why we have submitted this grant and request to asking the city for financial assistance, and we believe that with the city's partnership, we can amplify our impact, reach more individuals, and provide even greater support to those indeed in our city. We would be truly grateful if the city could just come alongside of us as co-laborers in this mission and any financial assistance or resources you could provide to put, to use for this goal would be much appreciated. Thank you for your time and God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Does the council have any questions? Is there any public comment? Oh, you have a question? Councilmember Allen, he has a question for you, sir.
Thank you for coming here this evening, Pastor. This, so this event occurred last year, October thirty-first?
Yes.
And was this event held at the location where your church is, over here on Mount Vernon?
Yes.
And was this event open to the public?
Yes.
Was this event permitted?
No, we did, we did it inside. So, I mean, we had people lined up outside, but we did it inside.
Yeah, but what I mean permitted, did you, did you get, have to get a city permit?
No, we didn't.
The event would not require a special event permit because the facility can handle that crowd.
Yeah.
But if we, but if we provide money, then do we look, then do we? If we provide financing for it, then we're involved and then we're part of the whole liability thing. And then do we, then do we need a permit?
No. The special event permit is the umbrella that really triggers if the, the activity that's happening at the site is larger than the site is prepared for. If you have three hundred people in a church that seats three hundred people, that's fine. If you have three hundred people in your backyard, we'd need a special event permit because you're exceeding the capacity and we want to put measures in place that would then be there to handle that crowd. So the crowd that they had there fell within their, the scope and the ability of the site to handle it. Therefore, they would not need a permit.
Okay, and, and us, and if we finance or if we help finance an event, then we don't require any kind of?
It's just the straight financing? No. The only time we'd require insurance is if it's city-sponsored or on city property. But we're, we are not operating or doing anything with the event as far as the structure, the activities, or anything else. We're just giving the money for it.
I see. But this event already occurred and, and it's, and this is a application for, are you wanting us to reimburse you for? Are you wanting to, excuse me, Councilmember? Are you wanting us to reimburse you for your expenses? Is that what you're asking for?
So what happened was this application unfortunately got misplaced and it did not come to our attention until December, and this is the first meeting we could get it on. So it was unfortunately city's fault and we have put in measures to correct this going forward.
Well, I remember us addressing this issue once before.
Not to my knowledge since I've been taking, have I taken over it? But this is the first one that's come to my attention that got missed. And we put in place procedures that staff know the direction of where they go to.
So, but still, the event already did occur and?
It did.
And so are we actually, is that what we're doing? Is you're asking for, are we reimbursing for the expenses or are you wanting to use it for a future event?
Well, technically, we put in the request before we did the event. And like she's stating is we never heard nothing back, Bill.
Well, I understand, but?
I mean, we were going to do it, we're going to do it either way. But if the, if the city is giving grants, thank you, and, you know, would like to partner with us as we, you know, because our heart and our mission is all about the community, you know, to reach people, to love on people, to help people. And if there's grants where we can, you know, get to help us in that endeavor, then equals that we're going to ask, you know, that was the whole purpose. But again, we asked before we even did the event, but we never heard nothing. So we weren't just going to wait and depend on, we're going to, we're going to believe God and we're going to do, do what God's called us to do.
Okay, I, I, I still, I remember whenever you were here before and I remember we had a discussion before on this very thing. And at that time, I said, this is after the fact, the event's already occurred and you're, are you wanting to reimburse? And I've never gotten a straight answer back. And I think that, I'm wondering if you're wanting a reimbursement or if you want to use it for a future event?
Of course, we would use it for either or. I mean, I mean, we put out the finances to do it and all that documentation is there. But we have many, like, that's why I said, we also did a Christmas event where there was toys that were given also, but we also went, the church went and bought a lot of toys. And we gave them to the, you know, low-income places here in this community. And we just, we gave toys and brought Christmas to people that may, you know, may not be able to have Christmas.
And thank you for doing that. I probably, I respect that and I appreciate that. But I just, I personally don't think that, that our community benefits fund should be used for reimbursement of events that already took place. If you wanted to submit an application for a future event, you know, that's going to occur, then I would not stop you from that, of course. But I, for me personally, I just don't see, I don't, if the, I think the community benefits fund is in place to help events occur, to help things happen, that people want to have happen in the future. And if it's already happened, then, you know, I'm glad for you and, and then?
But if I could say, is that our fault? Because we, we went through the proper channels. We sent it in, you know, before the event. But like she had said, there was some mix-up and, I don't know, you know? So, you know, we requested and asked for the city's help beforehand. But again, that's not our fault that it, you know?
Yeah, I remember. And I remember we also had a discussion about using the, a third party.
Not excluding the churches, yeah.
Using a third party for, for, for funding grant, for grant requests from religious institutions. So I remember, you know, all this, so.
Yeah. I just say because too, the church is all about the community, you know? That's why we do what we do, you know? Yeah.
Well, anyway, thank you for coming here and I don't have any more questions or comments.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you so much for coming out here again. It's clear on your application, October eleventh was the date that you applied. And so, again, by no fault of yours are we visiting this today. We are not revisiting it because the last request was for a retreat, not for a, an October thirty-first walk-through, to which a lot of community members before coming over to the trunk retreat did say you really did scare them in going through and that, you know, that there were a lot of eyes that were open and they were thankful for, you know, doing what you do and, you know, giving that message of hope so that people aren't alone. So again, thank you for what you do for the community without our churches and spaces for people to go and, you know, have a place. We have a lot of people dealing with mental health issues because of the outages. And so we're just thankful that you all are providing that support, so thank you.
Amen, thank you.
Okay, no further questions?
I'd like to move the item.
All right, removed by Councilman Brown. I'll second it. Go ahead and vote.
Motion passes and Jeff Allen has voted no.
Okay, so what we got? Item twelve, Legacy Regiment and Color Guard.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So the city received a community benefit fund application from Legacy Regiment and Color Guard requesting two thousand dollars. Karen Ariando is here to speak on behalf of the organization.
Good evening. I am the booster vice president and, you know, in this economic time, everybody is going through. We, as a program, have taken a hit, just like a lot of other people. One thing that I think is forgotten is band is not the cool sport. Football and cheer is fun and cool and Tiny Titans and all the things. Band kids are often felt like they are not seen. Once we found out about this benefit fund even being here, they were like, are you sure we're going to get it? I'm like, all we can do is try. So I think the biggest thing to stress is, everybody knows football and cheer is highly expensive. And they are detoured. If they cannot pay, they kind of push them to the side. We never do that. Every kid is welcomed, no matter what they can pay. They're given an estimate fair share at the beginning of every fall season and winter season. We're lucky if we get thirty percent from each kid. A lot of parents who don't come, who are not involved. It's heartbreaking to see it, but band becomes its own family. These kids are supported not only by their band director, the other kids. They become their own little group. And it's great to have it, but it costs money. The district only gives basically enough to make sure we have a band at a football game. They love to go out and compete. They love to go do all these things, but that costs money. We get a little more income generating through the fall, football games, snack bars, things like that. There is winter guard for these kids who want to keep performing, who keep doing things. That's a whole separate competition fee, show design fees, costumes, equipment, all the things that go along with it. Our fear is we've already seen a hit from the fall season. Not sure how much money is going to come in for the winter season. And we still want to be able to provide these things for the kids. So we're hoping you guys can help. We do what we can with whatever we can, always, and we're always looking how we can bring more money in, how we can do things. But if there's resources that can help, like you guys provide, we will ask. So, thank you.
Thank you. And you know you're invited to our parade too, right?
Yes, yes, we're working on it. He's looking at music. He's looking at music to make sure.
There's no parade without the band.
Well, and you, you know our, you know our issues that we had discussed before.
Okay, well, hopefully we work it out. Mayor Pro Tem?
It's good to see you again. I'm glad you're well. Are you filed as a five-on-one C three?
Yes.
Let's connect later because I want to connect you. There's a, an organization that provides options for five-on-one C threes, so it's. So it's, um, it's a warehouse resale location. Um, and so I'm happy to connect you with them.
Okay.
I've supported some of the other nonprofits with that. And I just want to say, you know, thank you for coming. My nephew was in band and it was the aunts and the uncles and the trailers and the trucks and who can help. And so I understand.
They're long days.
Yeah, we, we all pulled our share to, to help because we understand, like, not everybody has the support system. And we know that families have to work and so they can't always be there as well. So, um, thank you for bringing this forward.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
No public comment? Does council have any other questions or comments? Get a motion here?
A motion to approve the item.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Allen, second by Mayor Protem Sabino. Please vote.
Okay, motion passes with Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Allen, Mayor Protem Sabino and Mayor Hussey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Uh, item 13? I'm not gonna read, I'm tapped out. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Council, Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The city received a community benefit fund application from the Academy of Champions Figure Skating Team requesting $2,000. Lori Becker is here to speak on behalf of the organization.
Is she still here?
I'm not seeing her.
She skated on out of here?
She may have skated on out of here.
All right, well, I know blame the, um, these kids gotta get to sleep and it's getting late, so.
They do, so.
But I, I did talk to them and what it is, is, um, cow skate, they go there and they skate, they do competition on skates, you know, inline skating and everything. And they're part of the youth programs here. It was a little known secret, but I was out in my front yard and they got me buying seized candy. So that's how I found out about them. But it's a really neat competition and these kids, you know, they're like the band, they're trying to earn money. Because the insurance and the cover costs, so it's really neat to find another youth program that's going here for them, so.
And my understanding is it is open to the public. They would love to have more people, more kids come out and join, so.
And skating's a good exercise. Of course, I haven't been on skates since 1973 when there were metal skates and I fell down, so. But no, it's a good program. It's a, once again, you know, uh, people stepping up for our youth and keeping them busy and keeping them active, so.
If you're making a motion, I'll second it.
I'll make an emotion, you second it, so please vote.
All right, motion vote, motion passes with Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Allen, Mayor Protem Sabino and Mayor Hussey.
All right, uh, any future agenda, item H? Oh, I, I did ask for close. Item H, future agenda items. At this time, does the council have any future agenda items they want to bring back or talk about?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, to clarify earlier, we, we talked a little bit about fee waivers for, um, the, well, there was some conversation between you and the city manager about waiving fees or potentially reducing fees.
Okay.
For the generator diversion switches. And I, I would like to see an item brought back to completely waive those fees.
Okay.
I think it's important that we support the community and it's one thing that the city can do. And it's a cost that we can calculate in our effort to recover anything under the emergency. But the fact of the matter is, is we should be encouraging those inspections and people to get those, those permits so they're properly permitted. We know that they're safe and they're not creating a hot fire hazard by installing, uh, a diversion switch that isn't compliant with our code. And it, it also protects them from an insurance standpoint that it was properly permitted. So I would like to see that item come back.
Okay, so you still want them to come through the city for the inspection and everything else?
Well, if we're issuing a permit, we would, we would.
But no charge on the permit, is that what you're saying?
I want to see the fees waived for the.
Okay.
I would like to see that item come forward if that's the.
All right.
Can I add something to that?
Of course.
Go ahead.
All right, now, and that's a good idea, okay? I've had a few residents of this city approach me because they have really, really big trees on the back of their property. That's on their property, not city right of way. But they really can't swing the cost of bringing them down. And they, and they want, and they were talking with me about, you know, I mean, like, one of the residents has a tree and it, the, the cheapest estimate she's had is $10,500 to remove the tree, you know, and so, and of course, she, she just doesn't have that. She's elderly, on pension or social security, you know? But these are fire hazards and so, and, you know, some of these are up along the observation corridor. Is there any, is there any way that we can assist in any way with this? I'm wondering, you know, when a resident has a situation like this, they can, you know, maybe they can apply for a grant or a loan or something like that. You know, but if it's a really big, big deal like this, I mean, it's not like a $2,000 job, it is like a big $10,000 or $15,000 job.
Well, why don't we do an e-waiver agenda for the electric and then we'll do agenda for, um, look into things for, um, tree grants that the city can subsidize.
Some, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we should pay for all of them somehow.
Yeah, but somehow, you know, like, if there's a, yeah, subsidy. But we don't know. We have to see what the liability is on the city. You know, because it is private property on that, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's something to look at.
Yeah, well, that's what I wanted to throw out there, you know?
Okay, so let's do a first, uh, motion and second for the electrical waiver agenda. Matt, you did the motion, so I'll, I'll second it. And, um, you want us to vote separate on this? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Brown and a second by me for a waiver for permits for electrical install. But they still had to go through the safety inspection and everything else, but the way the fees, right, Matt?
Correct.
Okay.
This is for an agenda item, right?
Yes, correct. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Allen, Mayor Protem Sabino and Mayor Hussey.
Okay, and the second one would, agenda item would be look in the ways that we could help subsidize, um, homeowners. You want to say limited income or just look at whatever tree they have?
Well, I, I guess that'd be probably what we would discuss when it comes up on the agenda.
So just, we'll do the agenda on looking at, um, subsidizing tree removal for homeowners, right? And then we'll pull that as agenda? Okay. And you make the motion, I'll second, so please vote.
All right, motion passes with Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Allen, Mayor Protem Sabino and Mayor Hussey.
All right, thank you, council. And, uh, city communications, well, now Mayor Protem Sabino, have any communication?
Um, I just, again, want to thank the community who all came out here today and, you know, the, just everyone gathering and coming together for the common cause. Um, again, thank you to Southern California Edison for, Mark Cloud for literally coming into the lion's den today knowing how tumultuous this would be. And again, to our assembly member, Letitia Castillo, and to Senator Ochoa Boggs' office for being present and connecting with the community, finding out what resources we need and for work, for working with council to try and find ways that we can provide resources. So, um, I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I would again, like to thank the community for turning out tonight. I think it's important, this is a, a long-term issue and it's something that we all need to make sure that our voices are heard going forward. Because it's going to take policy changes in Sacramento and with the California Public Utilities Commission to get the results that we want. Um, and that's critically important. Uh, to piggyback on what, uh, Mayor Protem Sabino said. I have been in conversations with Board of Supervisors Chair Don Rao, who is our supervisor here in Grand Terrace. And she's committed to bringing additional resources to us and making those available. Uh, and specifically for our seniors, um, at the Blue Mountain Senior Villas and other seniors in town like at Azure Hills. As I mentioned earlier, you know, the senior villas are the highest profile, uh, group that, uh, need assistance. And, but there are a lot of others out there and they're, they're not as visible, but they still need our help. So we need to make sure that we're taking care of them. Um, but that, that's it, that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Councilman Allen?
So for anyone who's interested, the point, the annual point in time count is coming up here in a couple of weeks. And the, so for San Bernardino County, um, if you're, if you're interested in volunteering and participating, it's, um, on January 23. And you can find out more information or volunteer at sbchp.sbcounty.gov. The Point in Time Count is a very critical survey that helps communities and, and, um, cities and jurisdictions secure funding from, uh, grant funding and other resources that helps in the, uh, combat homelessness and, uh, help with any of those issues. So if you so desire, that's coming up January 23. And they've changed it now. If, if any of you have ever participated, we used to do it during the middle of the night from like 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. But now they do it from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM. So it's not one of those weird hour things wandering around in the dark. Okay, and that's, uh, um, all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Um, I know we have an assembly member Steele's office here, right? You're from the, is she from, yeah. So thank you for coming out and listening to our concerns and, uh, you know, and give us some money to help our residents. But, you know, please get your voice, you know, I know you're gonna go back and tell her, but we need, you know, the state's voice for the, especially our seniors too. Everybody, everybody's, you know, this is, it shouldn't be a new norm. So for us, okay, it is a new norm, something's wrong. It's, it's not. So thank you for coming out tonight. Doug's not here, but I wanted to thank him for his years of service as Mayor Protem and his wisdom. And, um, and I, I just got one thing on the, I went to the SBCTA and they came up with a, we, we are opposing 111 and 112, which is the gas, to get rid of the gas, water heaters, um, appliances. Um, we heard it from other agencies, the Sierra Club and stuff, saying how the gas causes asthma and everything else. I think we have done a lot in this state to, you know, fight climate stuff. So, um, one of the concerns with the, like Fontana's mayor brought up is, um, you know, affordable housing. This will add another additional more bureaucratic red tape stuff to housing. Mine wasn't as political. I said, this is crazy. We can't control our own grid and this is nuts. And then I'm gonna buy a buggy for, but then if I get a horse, I'll probably get hit for small check on my horse because of methane gas, so. But we gotta stop, this is crazy. You know, if we, if I didn't have gas appliance in my house right now, lighting it with a, a match, I wouldn't be cooking macaroni and cheese for my granddaughters, you know? So gas is reliable resource. I don't want to be held accountable, you know, just for one resource and that was electricity. I dealt with that in South Carolina and it's not fun when everything's electric. And I don't know why everything was electric, but everything was electric except for a propane barbecue and that's what kept us going. And that wasn't fun with a one and two-year-old. So, um, but we all, we're all fighting to make sure that this doesn't go through. Sometimes government just needs to stay out. So with that, before I give it to the city manager, um, LT, anything going on in the city far as crime? I mean, like, we talked about the senior center, you know, they act like they're having, uh, WWF going on over there. What's going on?
Yeah, so as far as the, I just would encourage everybody, obviously, if there's something going on, uh, it's great to, to jump on social media and, and obviously, uh, you know, voice your opinions and concerns about the community. But we really encourage from, from, from the sheriff's department to make sure that, uh, if it's an emergency that we're calling 911 or if it's a non-emergency, call the, the sheriff's department non-emergencies line because we want to get those resources out to you. Uh, the quicker you guys are able to let our dispatch know, uh, the, the sooner those, those calls can be aired and, and brought up on their screen and, and their units. And we can get, we can get resources out there for you. Um, if you see anything suspicious whatsoever, by all means, we have deputies that are out in this area. Uh, and if they're tied up, we, we have deputies that'll come from Loma Linda, they'll come from, um, you know, the county areas. I mean, they'll, they'll come from Highland and we, we have an abundance of resources that we could dedicate to this area if needed. We just, we just need to know where to go, you know, so we need you guys to be really diligent about letting, letting us know where that is. And that goes for, uh, anything with, with the shut offs and, and the power. Or it could be, um, concentrations of, uh, transients or, or, um, ju- 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 just anything. And we, we need you guys, you know, you, you are the eyes and ears out there in the community for us. And if we don't know what's occurring, uh, we can't get those resources out to you. So we encourage everybody to please make sure that, um, you know, you're letting us know and we can start allocating that. And it helps us out. And I told the mayor and the city manager, you know, by, by you calling dispatch and, um, you know, and getting those resources out there. Everything, everything is tracked, everything's logged. And so when we start looking at, um, available, you know, re, allocating resources to certain areas of the city or the county, we look at calls for service, we call, uh, what types of calls for services are. So it really helps us out to do that. So we encourage you to do that. And just, you know, especially in these times, um, you know, the, we talk about that it's not, you know, if it happens, it's when it happens. I mean, we, we're in a, you know, knock on wood, we're in an earthquake area. You know, we're prone for lots of different things in addition to wildfires, but just this would be a wake-up call for a lot of people to say, okay, you know, how to prepare yourselves for your family. Um, if you gotta get out of Dodge, you know, real fast, make sure your vehicles are gassed up. And just, just all the things to kind of prepare yourself just in the event, um, for the future. But, uh, you know, it's trying times, but everybody kind of coming together, uh, in the community, it makes us that much stronger to get through these things. And, uh, I just appreciate everything that, uh, city council and the city manager and the mayor have done to, to get you guys where you need to be today. So happy to be part of it. And then again, let us know anything we can help you with.
And thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you all, your officers too. And, and, you know, I know, um, Bobby Forbes and Johann's telling everybody to call, you know, the non-emergency plus 911. And, you know, if you're gonna stop and take a picture, then post it on social media, you're not doing anybody any good. Every second counts. You might be saving somebody's life. But if you see something wrong, report it. And, um, if they're not coming out, then you could call me and I'll call the lieutenant. But please report it. One other thing to reporting to is also to help that officer, because if he just keeps on, you know, he doesn't want to, he or she doesn't want to be labeled as, you know, racist or non-bi, you know, just going there and keep doing stuff that we're asking. He needs to know that there's a call there for service to, that's justified. Now, I know the officers will pull over something when they see something wrong or they'll, you know, they're gonna do that. But we have to justify their actions because I know before they've been sued and stuff. So they, they want to go home to their families. They're here to protect us. So if he sees something, call it out. And, um, so thank you for, uh, and also thank you for coming, you know, to the senior apartments last night and making extra patrol and checking on the security and stuff. Appreciate it.
Yeah, j- and just the areas that are being affected, the senior center and any area that where there's no power, um, just keep in mind, you know, we're, we're patrolling those areas because we're also aware of any looting, if it's gonna go on, any theft. And, you know, people, the, the criminals are gonna be in those area. Note now, um, that there's not gonna be any, you know, Ring cameras working and things like that. So obviously, we want to make sure that, uh, we're going out and patrolling those areas. And we're being very, very diligent about checking anybody in the neighborhood that maybe is looking suspicious, we're, we're questioning people and, uh, and all that. So just, you know, rest assured that we're, we're out there taking care of that as well.
Well, I had three individuals at my front door when it was pitch dark and I opened it up and my dogs ran. It was three donkeys. Scared the living you-know-what out of me. And then one tried to come in the house. I said, buddy, there's no electricity here. You gotta leave. So you might want to keep an eye on those donkeys too.
We'll take care of that, yeah.
He came, he was trying to go to my house. City manager, you know, thank you for all your hard work and your job. And I know sometimes our patience gets worn and we put it on you, but, you know, thank you. What's your communication?
Thank you, and I appreciate the community's support throughout this. As Councilmember Allen said, a crisis is a terrible thing to waste. And let's not waste this crisis. We learned lessons. We learned the things we need to do to be prepared. So when the power comes on, let's not put everything away and then go back to life as normal. Let's do what it takes to be prepared because our representative from Edison was very clear, this is not the last time it's going to happen. So use this time to get prepared so that next time, we're not struggling like we are this time. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna go in a closed session conference with legal counsel existing in litigation pursuant to government code section 54954.5C, 5494, 54956.9, naming the case advocates of Environmental versus City of Grand Terrace, San Bernardino Superior Court Case Number CIVSB2423305. CIV SB 2423305. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, I know you're not gonna wait here for us, but, you know, once again, we're closing and remember it's Karen McKeever, family, friend, really good lady, beautiful soul, the family's been here for a while, Mr. McKeever's done a lot for our water company, so in honor of Karen, you know, God bless and be safe and we'll see you later. Okay, we're back from closed session. City Attorney, you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have four councilmembers participate in the closed session. Councilmember Allen just left, but we did have a quorum then during the council, during the closed session and also now, reporting out. Update was provided by the city attorney, discussion was had, no reportable action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And once again, I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight, and like I said earlier, we're, remember it's a longtime Grand Terrace resident, Karen McKeever. Our next regular city council meeting will be held January 28, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Any request of items placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. Good night.